I go to Princeton University, majoring in psychology.
I go to Harvard and I'm majoring in economics.
I'm going to Duke and I'm majoring in psychology and global health.
I'm going to Johns Hopkins and I'm majoring in chemistry.
Our advantage, great teachers and programs at Orange County Public Schools. See what's possible for you.
There are magnet programs, advanced placement and honors classes, and guidance counselors who help us choose the right courses. You can even earn college credit while in high school.
OCPS has programs for every type of learner.
Orange County Public Schools, leading students to success.
I'm going to ask Dr. Jenkins, our superintendent, while our board members are coming in. I know they've had a packed agenda all day today. They have been here, so they're trying to grab something. I think the area's soup's are trying to grab. So in order to give them that, I would not officially call this meeting to order until all my board members are seated and my area's soup. So at this time, I would like Dr. Jenkins. We had the opportunity of being with the President of the United States of America this week, and we were just excited about it. And I also had the opportunity of serving with the National School Board, African-American Council as the new chair-elect. That's just a one-year position, though, but I'm enjoying it. But I would like Dr. Jenkins, while we're waiting on board members and area soup to grab a little something and you to get seated, I would like for her to just share a little bit about the slides that you see and how we were there with 60 of the largest urban school districts in the nation. I'm Kat Gordon. I'm your acting chair tonight of Orange County School Board. Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly, as folks are getting to their seats, Vice Chairman Gordon and I were honored to be invited, one of the large urban districts, to come to the White House for a special event. The President was further unveiling his plan, my brother's keeper, which is really looking out for how we serve, how we better rescue, how we better motivate and take care of young males of color throughout this country. I think he brings a national focus to what we discovered here in Orange County Public Schools when we established our Minority Achievement Office. We recognize if we disaggregate our groups, the subgroup that we are most concerned about, making sure they do not fall through the cracks and making sure that they have a brighter future, are both our Hispanic and African-American males. Those are the two groups that have the most struggles. And so the President's initiative simply added credibility and certainly added additional leverage to what Orange County has already committed to around the notion of saving young males of color. And so we had an event that morning at the White House. Commissioner of, Secretary of Education, Arnie Duncan, and senior staff members. And then additionally, we had a town hall meeting at one of the local elementary schools. And the engagement was around young minority males and mentoring programs that can help them have a brighter future. Bottom line is, we know when one significant adult other than the parent is involved in a young person's life, they can have a significant impact on their academic achievement and on their eventual graduation from high school. And so the White House is willing to lead the way in that kind of mentoring program and encouraging others to do it as well. We need to make certain we are taking care of, as a community, that we're taking care of all of our children. Certainly, our minority populations have some additional needs that have to be taken care of when we look at the data. And then certainly, our males of color are the most at-risk population that we need to serve. And so we appreciated the national attention and focus brought to it, but wanted to say again that Orange County Public Schools and this school board passed a resolution that simply confirmed commitments that they had already made around helping serve our minority students through our newly-established Minority Achievement Office. Ms. Gordon was certainly gracious in her attendance and had quite a time there as we visited in Washington, DC. The chairman was out of town. He's actually on annual leave, was unable to go. And so she accompanied me there. We were proud to represent Orange County Public Schools and certainly honored to be a part of the President's event. Madam Chair.
I would like to thank our superintendent, Dr. Jenkins, for that great summary of what took place. But I really, and you can see that I am there. This is with the American Indian Caucus that the President selected. It was by invitation, as Dr. Jenkins stated. And we did go in through the executive office side, which was very impressive. I had been there many times, but never in the executive office. And even to be with the Commissioner of Education, Arnie Duncan, and Michael Cassely from the Great City Schools. There were so many great superintendents there. And as Dr. Jenkins stated, 60. And one reason why we were selected, because this board, along with the superintendent and under her leadership, had already established the male of color with our universities, with the college. Dr. Jenkins, I think it is the college board also that we will be working with, and so many other organizations, the Florida and M Law School, and so, so many others. It was very impressive to have your name tag. And you can see the nameplate that was just there. So I just thank you so very much for having me to... The chairman could not make it, so I was able to, Dr. Jenkins was able to get me in. And I really want you to know, you've asked us to become a world-class school system, and even within our mission. And I want you to know that Dr. Jenkins is highly respected, not only among the President of the United States, but also her colleagues that were superintendents there. And we had an opportunity to collaborate. Generally, I meet with the board members in our National School Board Association, but to see the superintendents and the board members working closely together. Several of your board members up here have actually had an opportunity to go to all of us and participate within the Great City Council. The Great City Council is highly respected by the President of the United States. And he feels that we are an advocate force. We are about educating children, working with preschoolers, working with middle, elementary, high, and college prep career readiness. So I'm excited, and I would like for you to give Dr. Jenkins a round of applause, because she was highly respected. And with that in mind, I officially call this school board meeting to order. I'm going to ask Mrs. McGill, do we have a quorum? And do we have enough board members present to begin? All right, with that in mind, I'm going to ask you, for the courtesy of the audience and board members, that you please silence your cell phones at this time. And at this particular time, we're going to recognize our current Teacher of the Year, and that's none other than Kristin Iannuzzi. Kristin, are you here? Well, you just stand up. Go and just stand up. Kristin, you bring us joy here at OCPS. Ms. Iannuzzi from West Orange High School. She teaches language arts and is the head wrestling coach for the boys' wrestling team. I like that. Don't you all like that? Ms. Iannuzzi has earned another honor. This is the inaugural year for the Macy's Magic of Teaching Award. Ms. Iannuzzi received the award on July the 10th of this year at the Annual Teach of the Year Awards held at the Hard Rock Live at Universal Studios. We're really, we've learned so much more about her, and we will learn more about the Magic of Teaching Award in a moment. Ms. Iannuzzi, can you please step to the podium all the way up? And you don't even need a little stand, do you? And she's wrestling the boys. That is amazing. Yeah, she's instructing the boys, but she's out there wrestling. You're wrestling too, aren't you?
Yes, ma'am.
You've got to teach them who's in charge. She's going to lead us in a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Please stand and bow your heads for a moment of silence as she leads us, our wonderful Teacher of the Year.
And now if you'll join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Ms. Iannuzzi, just stay for a minute. We thank you so very much. And we want you to just stand there, because we want everybody to see how beautiful you are. And not only that, but you have mesmerized the entire state. Okay. She's keeping for us. All right. Thank you. As recipient of the Magic of Teaching Award from Macy's, you have distinguished yourself as an educator who goes beyond the basic job description. The award goes to an educator who teaches his or her students to have integrity in all aspects of their lives, how to be leaders, and how to succeed by living positively. Additionally, the award is meant for an educator who displays strong moral character. And just plain represents everything that is good about the education of our children. And you exemplify that more over than enough. Ms. Iannuzzi, perhaps one of your former students sums it up best by saying, and I quote, "Kristin Iannuzzi saved me from myself. I'm the first in my family to graduate high school and will be the first to ever graduate college." Thanks to Ms. Iannuzzi, unquote. Ms. Iannuzzi, do you have any comments that you would like to make at this time?
No, ma'am.
So with that in mind, I didn't want to stop you. Could you please step up here so that we may present you with a certificate of recognition? And we'd like to shake your hand and just thank you. And there are so many board members that want to speak to you, so you'll have to go back to the podium when you get through, okay? Okay, we're going to ask you to go back to the podium. You won't have to speak. Do you talk in the wrestling class? Probably not. There are board members that would like to just say something to you on behalf of the board, and of course, your school board member, none other than Ms. Pam Gould.
Well, I relish and think fondly of the night that you were crowned our Teacher of the Year. And I don't, you all may not be able to see this, but one of the things that is very compelling about Ms. Iannuzzi is that she is very humble. You see that she has a bundle of energy. You see that she just emotes positiveness. And we stood together at one of the graduations, and she made up the best things to say to each of the kids as they went by, like, "Go out and get the world. Live a dream. Don't let a day go by." It was inspiring and amazing. And I want to thank you for representing us well. I want to thank you for representing our community well, and most of all, our students in our school. So thank you.
Mr. Roach would like to address you also on behalf of the board.
Kristin, since you're going to be quiet, I'll speak for you. But I always like to go out and visit the Teachers of the Year. I used to say, "I want to just sit in a class and just watch you teach." And I was able to do this, and I have to tell you, I'm always impressed with teachers for the way that they're able to deal with their class. They talked about Ernest Hemingway that day. And I will tell you that the key to being a good teacher is to make the subject matter relevant to kids. And she must have had two or three different lessons within that 45-minute period that I think made the relevancy really stand out. And the kids were involved in the discussion, and I got to listen in on that. But she's just, you know, calling her a natural is really a disservice to her. She goes above and beyond that. But she's just a very engaging teacher. I was very, very impressed. And I, so I just want to thank you for welcoming me to your class. She wasn't nervous at all. And I am just very, very proud of you, Kristin. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Right, thank you so very much. Let's give our Teacher of the Year another round of applause. Wow, she's very special. Thank you, Kathy Maes. That is so wonderful. She's very special to us, and she's going on to do great things. And now after that wonderful moment, let us go to the rest of the meetings. I would just like to take care of a little bit of housekeeping. And basically, any individual that would like to address an item on the consent or non-consent agenda, you may do so by completing the appropriate yellow form. And you may find this form at the end of the board table where Ms. Deborah McGill is. I will call you to speak when that item you have signed up for is before the board. Please understand that in accordance with parliamentary procedure, this is the opportunity for you to testify before the board. It is not a question-and-answer session. But I will assure you that staff is all around us. The area superintendents are over to my right. And I assure you that they will be writing down your questions. So within your period of time, if you can mention your questions, we will make sure that they can get answered. So staff is also available to meet with you after you speak. And should you have any question, board members will stay. And they are always happy to stay and meet with you following the meeting, especially if you wish to discuss any item of concern that is either coming before the board or that is already on the agenda. You will have about three minutes to address the board. When you come, we ask that you be very courteous in that you do not reference anyone's name when you are here before the board. If there are any schedule constraints and you need to go and you cannot, you're so far down, because we have quite a few public hearings tonight, and it may take long. If you would just go over to Ms. McGill and let her know that you're under time constraint, we will see how we can accommodate you and make it comfortable for you that you will be able to take care of the business here and the business in which you will have to leave. Board members have a monitor in the front of there, okay? So you can see, so that they can see what is on the agenda, what is on the board, and also the overhead screen behind me. So every now and then, you will see board members looking down. We're either looking at our iPad, our laptop, or the screens which are in front of us. So with that in mind, Ms. McGill, it mentioned that all of the board members are present except for our chair, Mr. Bill Subled. He will not be with us, but he did send his love to you. And he can't wait to see exactly what you're going to do tonight, okay? So I'm going to ask the audience, if you would do this. I know you're friends with most of the board members and maybe the superintendent up here. But I'm going to ask you, if at all possible, in order for us to expedite the time and move it quickly and we can get to everybody, I ask that you direct all questions through the chair. And that way, if you put, when you're up here and you put your questions, we will make sure that your questions get to the appropriate person. So with that in mind, Dr. Jenkins, introduction of newly-appointed administrators.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I should tell you, we have 26 appointments. That explains the very large crowd here tonight. We are pleased to introduce each of them for you. And they have been told they have about 30 seconds with that microphone. First, we have Kevin Balibus, who was the resource teacher at Ocoy High School. He is now, with your approval, tonight will be the Assistant Principal at Spring Lake Elementary School.
Good evening, and thank you. I'd like to thank Vice Chairman Gordon, the board members, and Superintendent Jenkins. I also like to thank from our North Learning Community, Dr. Gordon and Dr. Gruber. Here with me tonight, I have my former principal, Dr. Angie Osborne, who's back there somewhere. I also have my current principal, Dr. Nancy Pender, and my beautiful family, my wife, Deena, my daughters Jenna and Ella. Thank you.
That is so nice. Next, we have Michelle Brown, resource teacher at Evans High School. She will be the new Assistant Principal at Evans High School.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Chair Gordon, Nancy Robinson, and other members of the school board, Superintendent Jenkins, and staff, my area director and area superintendent, Dr. Gordon and Gruber, my principal, Jenny Gibson-Link, my first principal and mentor, Dr. Bridgette Williams. My family is somewhere in the back at the moment, but I'd like to thank you as well as my colleagues and friends who are here to support me. Thank you.
Carrie DeVore is a very exceptionalities teacher at Rosemont Elementary. She will be the new Assistant Principal at Rosemont.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Vice Chairman Gordon, along with Nancy Rogers and the school board members, along with Superintendent Jenkins, Ms. Harrelson, who I've worked under for eight years, along with my parents and husband and friends and family in the back. Thank you for coming.
Kristi Dross was administrative dean at Wacaiwa. She will be the new Assistant Principal at Edgewater High School.
Thank you so much. I'd like to say thank you to Vice Chairman Gordon, to the school board, to Superintendent Dr. Jenkins and her staff. Additionally, the North Area Administrators, Dr. Gordon and Dr. Gruber. I'd like to specifically thank Dr. Gruber for being my mentor and the reason I even decided to go into administration. I'd like to thank Mr. Hepburn, my gonna-be principal. Also, my husband, Jesse, my son is to and at home for your benefit, and thank him as well. And then also, my best girl here, Christina. Thank you so much.
Rosine Fritt was instructional support at Exton Elementary, will be the new Assistant Principal at Weatherby Elementary.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Gordon, Rick Roach, board members. Thank you, Dr. Jenkins, Dr. Vasquez, Mr. Lawson, some of my mentors, Mr. Merchant, Ms. Webley, my new principal, Mr. Lynn Lau, and my family, my friends that are here, my sister, Renita, and I think my brother's back there somewhere. Thank you.
Desiree Richmond-Houghton, Osceola County School District, will be Assistant Principal at Molly Ray Elementary.
Thank you so much. I would like to thank Vice Chairman Gordon. I would like to thank the superintendent, Dr. Jenkins, and your staff, also the Orange County Public School Board members. I am extremely humbled by this appointment, and I appreciate it. I'd like to also thank my family. I would like to thank my husband, my mother, my siblings that are over there and supporting me as well. Thank you guys so much.
Christina Howell was resource teacher at Citrus Elementary, will now be the Assistant Principal at Lake Jim Elementary.
Vice Chairman Gordon, school board members, Dr. Jenkins, staff, and I just want to thank you so much for being able to work with OCPS. Thank you to Ms. Schuler and Ms. Robin Brown, my new principal at Lake Jim. I'm very excited to be going there. Thank you so much to Delane Bender. I've been with her for several years, five years or so, and she's given me the experience that I've needed. It's a bittersweet leaving Citrus Elementary, but I'm very excited to be going to Lake Jim. I also want to thank my family and friends for joining me. My husband is in Ohio, and he's watching on FaceTime with my kids. They're at a national fine arts competition for my children. So thank you so much for this opportunity.
Jeray Mays is resource teacher at Evans High School. She will be the new Assistant Principal at Carver Middle School.
Thank you. Good evening. I would like to thank Vice Chairman Gordon and the board members, and Superintendent Dr. Jenkins and staff. Thank you to the STO administrators, Mrs. Schuler, Dr. Cartwright. Thank you to my new principal, Dr. Adams. And Dr. Stevens welcoming me to Carver. Special thanks to my former principal, Mrs. Gibson-Link, and former administrators for such mentorships and opportunity and support. And also to my parents and my grandmother who's here, my kids, and my husband who's out of state. But thank you, very excited for this opportunity.
We have quite a few more to go here. I'm going to make it easy for you. If you just say thank you to all you people sitting up front, that's good. Really, really, we know who you mean. If you say thank you to the board and staff, that's good. And really, if you just spend your time instead about mentors or family members, we'd be happy. All right, so next we have Jeray Mays. I'm sorry. Antonio Roman, administrative dean at University High School. He's going to be the new Assistant Principal at University High School. This is a test.
All right, well, thank you to everybody up front. Thank you to my wife, eh? My mother-in-law, Adele, for her support as well. Ms. Palermo as well, Assistant Principal at University High School. Thank you to all my former administrators, Dr. Garkara, Dr. Armbruster, Dr. Shames, Dr. Trimble, all my people that I've worked with at South Creek Middle School, University High School, Legacy. Thank you for everybody. I am very excited about this great opportunity.
You get an A, I tell you what. Because really, folks up here understand you acknowledge the board and staff. We really want you to have a chance to say something about mentors and family. That's really what's important when you get those 30 seconds of fame with that microphone. Promise you, nobody will be offended if you don't name us all individually. Jared Scott is behavior specialist at Deerwood. He's about to become the new Assistant Principal at Brookshire Elementary School.
I'd like to thank the board and staff. I'd like to thank my mentors, John Wright, John McHale, and Kenesha Holmes. I'd like to thank my family for always being supportive, my mother, and my beautiful wife, Natalie. Thank you.
Thomas Soli, New York City Department of Education, will be the new Assistant Principal at Union Park Middle.
Okay, thank you to everybody up front. We'll go quick here. Thank you to my new principal, Ms. Sama, and staff for coming out. Past principals or mentors or college professors, Dr. Pope, Dr. Lawson, Scott Howard in the back, most importantly, my better half who's out back there, Dr. Carmen Balgobin. Thank you, and it's glad to be back in Orange County Public Schools.
Hang on, I have to introduce you.
Apologize. Sorry.
They're getting a little anxious. Okay. Andrea Stinkin, Lake County School District, will be the new Assistant Principal at Walker Middle School.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I'd like to thank the board and the staff. I'd also like to thank Dr. Jara, Ms. Schuler, Dr. Cartwright, and my new principal, Dr. Valli, for giving me this opportunity. I look forward to being a part of a team that's committed to student success. I'd also like to thank my family, my husband Greg, my daughter Addison, my son Xander, as well as my youngest daughter, who is at home as well for your benefit, and my parents for their support. Thank you.
Ketron Stroud is resource teacher at East River High School, will become the new Assistant Principal at East River High School.
Good evening. I would like to thank the board and staff. I would like to take this time to thank my principal, Mr. Lumen, as well as my East River family for all of your support and challenges throughout the year. I appreciate it. To my husband, my daughter, my parents who are not here, as well as family and friends, thank you for your continuous support and always encouraging me to shoot for my dreams.
Ashton Terry from Osceola County School District will be the new Assistant Principal at Orla Vista Elementary.
Thank you, board members and district staff. Thank you very much to my new principal, Gwendolyn Carter Inge, for giving me this wonderful opportunity. I wish to thank my beautiful wife, Elizabeth, and our four-month-old Ashton Jr. And I'm excited to join the Orange County family. Thank you.
Lauren Watson was resource teacher at John Young Elementary. She will become the new Assistant Principal at Sadler Elementary.
Thank you. Thank you, board. I would like to thank my mentor, Ms. Ivory, which is also going to be my principal as well, my family that came, my husband Nate, my two boys, Aiden and Devon, and then my extended family for support that they came tonight. Thank you.
Agatha Alvarez was Assistant Principal at Millenia. She will be the new principal at Tildenville Elementary School. And also, since it is a dual-language, in case you didn't know, is conversant in both French and Spanish.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, board. I have with me my wonderful family, Frank Alvarez, Dale, Chrissy, and Cassandra, and my extended OCPS family that's here with me, Ms. Lionel, Ms. Harmon, Ms. Bee, and Ms. Holly. My mentors, I have so many mentors throughout OCPS. I have Dr. Rudzik, Dr. Vasquez, Dr. Lawson. Thank you for all that you've done for me, and I greatly appreciate it.
Sharon Anderson was Assistant Principal at Boone High School. He's about to become the new principal of Chain of Lakes Middle School.
Good evening, good evening. First, of course, I listened very, very well. Thank you, board members. Thank you, Dr. Jenkins and her staff. Also, I'd like to thank my family. family who's here, my beautiful, pregnant, glowing wife, Nadia, my six-year-old, Kalen, my mother and father, my brother, my sister-in-law, friends and family. They're all here. Just like to say thank you, and I'm so excited. I have many mentors. I've been in the district for a couple of years now, so everyone that's helped me along this journey, thank you.
William Charlton, Assistant Principal at Catalina Elementary School, will become the principal at Riverdale Elementary.
Thank you, board, and thank you so much to my current principal, Merlene Kimball. And I'd like to thank my mentor and past principal, Ann Lionel, and my brother, who is actually the twin, my twin, and he's the principal at Durance Elementary, for all of his support. And I'm going to put him on speed dial. And I appreciate everything, and thank you so much for this wonderful opportunity.
Carletta Davis-Wilson, Assistant Principal at Eagles Nest Elementary, will become the new principal at Pine Rock Elementary.
Thank you, board members and staff. I just want to say thank you to my family, my husband Todd, and my boys that are here. I want to thank my principal this year, Ms. Jaster, and Laura Supernard, and everyone who's given me an opportunity, especially Dr. Wyndham, who's pushed me out and told me I can do it. So, I can't wait to serve the students and family at Pine Rock Elementary. Thank you.
Jason Fritz, Assistant Principal at Apopka Elementary, will become the new principal at Fern Creek Elementary.
Thank you, board and staff. I appreciate this opportunity. I also want to thank Dr. Cunningham, a great mentor of mine from my first day of teaching back years and years ago. Not sure if she can make it tonight, but she's been a great help along the way. Also want to thank Candice Gochet, principal of Pinewood. She was great help and assistance moving along, as well as Sandy Pipkin, current principal at Apopka Elementary. They've all been wonderful. And of course, I cannot do without my wonderful family, my wife, Kimbra, daughter Carly, son Jake, and my parents have been a great help. Thank you very much.
Felicia Goodman was Assistant Principal at Eccleston Elementary. She will be the principal at Eccleston Elementary.
Thank you to everyone down front. Thank you to my lovely family, my son Dante, daughter-in-law Nuka, my two grandsons, Dante and Devin, and my extended Eccleston family out there. Thank you. Thank you. And all of my mentors, and my former principal, Tracy Webly. Thank you.
Yvette Irizarry, Assistant Principal at Forsyth Woods Elementary, will be the new principal at Camelot.
Thank you, school board members. Thank you, staff. Thank you for this opportunity. I would also like to thank Mr. Leslie, who is an amazing instructional leader and my mentor. And a special thanks to my husband, who has been very supportive in this journey.
Patrice Knowles was Assistant Principal at Apopka Middle School. She will be the new principal at Gotha Middle School.
School board members, thank you, and Dr. Jenkins. And I would like to thank God above everyone else for giving me this opportunity. Tonight, I would like to thank my family and friends that are here to support me. First of all, I want to thank my husband of 27 years, Andrew Knowles, and all of my friends, my mentors, that are here to support me. I want to thank my pastor for being here. He prayed with me and encouraged me, so I really want to thank him for that. And other members of my church, my best friend, and just other teacher friends. And most of all, I just want to thank God for the opportunity. And I know, with the support that I have of my school board member, Pam Gold, and also my previous school board member, Christine Moore, I know I will be successful. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Sorry. Alex Reyes was Assistant Principal at University High School. He will be the new principal at Englewood Elementary.
Gratitude makes sense of our past, bring peace for today, and creates a vision for tomorrow. Melody Betty. I'm grateful of this opportunity, Vice Chairman Gordon, board members, Superintendent Jenkins and staff, especially Mrs. Cato, my current board member, Mrs. Flynn, my new board member, and Dr. Diaz, area superintendent, Mr. Wright, EAD. Thank you. In addition, I want to thank my family for the support of my endeavors, my wife, Belinda, my sons, Vidan, Gabriel, daughter Sophia, family, parents, and in-laws. Right here. It has not been an easy road, especially the last two and a half years, along with my Florida turnaround leaders, graduates, which are here too, some of them. Also, my mentor, Dr. Kupin McCoy. A lot of learning has happened, including University High School with Dr. Karkara and staff. I intend to put all this into action to serve the students and the community at Englewood Elementary. Gracias.
Edie Sohegan was Senior Administrator, Regional Differentiated Accountability Model in Teaching and Learning. She will be the new Assistant Principal at Washington Shores Elementary.
My dad's getting choked up, so it's hard, but thank you, all of you. Appreciate this opportunity. I'd like to especially thank Dr. Ella Thompson. Excuse me. Dad, it's all your fault for stretching me, being my mentor, and a phenomenal leader. Thank you to Kathy Schuler for everything. You're amazing. Thank you to my new amazing principal for this opportunity. I'm excited to go on this journey with you, Dr. Jones. Thank you to my friends and coworkers who are here with me today, especially the incredible Wendy Appleby for her support on a daily basis. Thank you. Oh, and my father.
What was that last thank you? We didn't hear it up here.
My incredible father for everything that he's done for me. He is the Father of the Year.
Rebecca Watson was Senior Manager for Professional Development Services. She will be the new Assistant Principal at Oak Ridge High School.
Thank you, school board members and staff. Thank you to all of the district staff. There's way too many people to name who have mentored me in my past 10 years I've worked in Professional Development Services. In particular, Scott Fritz and everyone in the Division of Teaching and Learning, Dr. Amanda Ellis, who is teaching at UCF tonight and couldn't be here, but without her, this wouldn't be possible. Mr. Ron Duval, who hired me as a first-year teacher. I have to thank him, or else I wouldn't be here. My lovely family's here tonight, my husband Terry, my children, my daughter Chloe and her boyfriend Patrick, my son Jeremiah, my sons Jacob and Samuel, and to all of my friends and family who are here to support me. Thank you.
Members of the board, certainly, this was quite a list as we prepare to start up another school year. Always in July, we have a significant number of appointments. I will tell you, we are well pleased with the talent and the individuals that we will have helping to lead our schools for this coming school year. Madam Chair, that concludes my roster.
Well, Madam Superintendent, we really thank you for an awesome list, and we do have a few board members that would like to address the audience and the new administrators. But we thank you so hard. We can see that the area superintendents behind you and the staff in the back, where Dr. Schuler is back there. They have worked extremely hard to make sure that our schools are staffed well for this beginning of year. They have their work cut out, and I want to give you a thank you for those of you who actually followed the superintendent directive. That was your first superintendent directive, so that's a positive one. So, God bless you. You all did well. Our first speaker will be Ms. Robinson, followed by Ms. Moore, and then, I believe, Pam, Ms. Ghul, and Mr. Roach, and Ms. Flynn, in that order. Thank you.
Thank you. I mostly want to say congratulations to all of you, because it truly is amazing to earn the respect and the honor and the excitement from all of us. We trust Dr. Jenkins so much with all of the positions that she fills every year, and what an amazing crew. So, to all of you, congratulations. I'm going to say a few specifics to District 6's board. Take my personal privilege. My new APs, I have four, Evans, Edgewater, Rosemont, and Lake Jim. Congratulations. I come out to the schools a lot, so I look forward to getting to know you a lot better in your new administrative role. I'll see you more than I get to actually see the teachers. So, I look forward to getting to know you all better. Congratulations. And to my new principal, head principal at Fern Creek, Mr. Fritz, you've got a great school. Fern Creek's an amazing place. Have you learned the fight song yet? If you need a little help, I can help you. My husband graduated from Fern Creek many, many, many years ago, and my kids even know the Fern Creek fight song because my husband sang it to them before they went to bed every night. It's a really cute, catchy tune. So, if you need help, I'm your person. I'll help you out. So, go Bulldogs. And then, I just want to throw out, and it's not in District 6, but Becky, congratulations. That's so exciting. We know Becky because she's been working so closely with all of us down here, and that's just really wonderful. So, congratulations. So, anyway, congrats to everybody. You guys are awesome.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Thank you. And Ms. Moore, thank you.
Well, Dr. Jenkins, maybe we'll all take your advice as well and keep it brief, because we have quite a meeting tonight. But to all of you, we really appreciate that you are here and you have chosen to work for Orange County Public Schools. And I was just thrilled to hear how many new principal positions, assistant principals had come from other districts. So, we really want to give you a hearty welcome to Orange County Public Schools. And it's going to be a wonderful year. We're looking forward to so many things, your success, and also hope you'll be rooting us on as we travel to New York in about, I guess there's a clock upstairs. I think it's 55 days, and it's really due to the work of all of you in this room that we're even in the running to be considered the top urban school district in the entire country. So, thank you and welcome, and let us know if there's anything you ever need. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Okay, Ms. Ghul?
I do want to congratulate the new administrators this evening, and certainly the ones for District 4 and my middle schools. We're very excited about the upcoming year. But I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Mr. John Ruznick, because this will be his last meeting tonight, I believe. The official, official, official retirement date, even though we've been talking about it, is Thursday. So, thank you, John, for your service, and I look forward to I look forward to seeing you for breakfast when you're retired.
All right. Ms. Flynn?
Thank you, Ms. Ghul. Thank you, Madam Chairman. When I go and visit schools and visit principals and teachers and staff, what I find is that the principal has to be so many things. You have to be an instructional and curriculum leader. You have to be a boss. You have to be a leader. You have to know organizational behavior and be a visionary. It's such a total package that you have to be, and you have to be able to bring your staff with you. Those are the successful leaders that I see, and we have so many of them. And listening to your comments and hearing where you're from, I know that that's the kind of leader that you're going to be. So, I want to congratulate all of you, and thank you for wanting to work so hard for Orange County Public Schools and for us and for the students. I wanted to just call out two people from District 2. Mr. Alex Reyes, you know, welcome to Englewood. We're looking forward to having you. You have, you know, you're following somebody who brought that school up to an A. He's here in the back, Dr. Jones, who also went to Florida Southern College. I have to bring that out. That's my alma mater, so every time. But I know you can do it, because when I heard of your background, I was very happy and thinking, yes, we've got somebody who's going in there and keeping that school together. And then I wanted to say congratulations to Yvette Irizarry. Congratulations. You did a fantastic job over at Forsyth Woods Elementary, and I know you're going to do a fantastic job at Camelot. I'll miss you in District 2, but I really actually live around the corner from you, so I'll be seeing you. Congratulations, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn. Mr. Roach?
You know, I just have to make comments because I have so much history from these schools, and it's just always so cool to watch the changing of the guard. But I want to thank Ms. Watson for her service at John Young. We just built you a new school. I don't know why you left. Just built you a brand-new school, and you walk out the door. But I guess you're going to greener pastures. And Mr. Anderson from Boone, of course, all the Roach Boys went there. I worked there. Lots of history for me there. And, you know, I saw that coming, Mr. Anderson. I saw your principalship coming. I knew it was just a matter of time. You're just a terrific guy and very enthusiastic. I think your staff is going to be just thrilled to have you. Ms. Fritz, welcome to Weatherby, where everything is be this and be that. They had it kind of knocked with that name over there. Lots of history with Mr. McGuire at Conway Elementary School, another place the Roach Boys. I was the founder of Parents on Patrol at Conway Elementary as a parent, when we used to have some vandalism in that old school over there. And so, I also used to serve hot chocolate to my son, the safety patrol man, in cold weather. And he says to this day, Dad, you know, you always brought me hot chocolate. The truth was, I hope he's not hearing this, it was one time. And my wife said, don't ever tell him different. I said, I won't. And the other one was, of course, you know, my special place, Andrea, coming over to Walker Middle School. That's where I got my start, years and years ago, as a science teacher, teaching out of field, just grateful to have a job at that particular time. And I really loved that school, and I just hope that you'll like it, and you'll love it, and take care of it. All right? Thanks. Congratulations to all of you.
Oh, so wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Roach. And now, Ms. Joey Cato.
Well, one of the things that's the hardest for a school board member is when a beloved principal takes and moves to another school, because you are taking career steps. And so, a lot of times, we get phone calls going, oh, please, please. But I am so excited of everyone who has gotten appointments tonight. I know we're in great hands. Dr. Jenkins, I know we keep asking you to reload and reload and reload, and you keep doing it for us and to all the area superintendents. I am so excited for the new school year to start. Usually, things are pretty stable in District 1, but Mr. Wright had me walking around meeting everyone. So, welcome to all of you. We are so excited for you. Becky, we are going to miss you in professional development, but we wish you all the best in your new. And I have to tell you, Becky Watson and her family have the best summer family vacations of anyone. They fish, they hike. I mean, I have loved watching her on Facebook this summer. I want to live Becky's vacation life in my next life. So, congratulations to all.
Well, board members, we must certainly thank you so much for your comments, and especially you, Dr. Jenkins. And I think the area administrators and the administrators in the back and on our left and right, you know that you've done your work. And I just even want to commend John Ruznick and Dr. Border in my district, because there are too many for me to name within my district, with Dr. Bridget William and all of the, Dr. Marie Vasquez. We just have so many. But I want to say this. I'm a pastor's wife, Woodhode, and I know that I see Reverend Bracy here. He is like taken on as my main pastor next to Reverend Terrence Gray. But I think I saw Reverend Brown. If you will all would just stand. And if there are other ministers in the audience, I mean, Reverend Barnes, that's right. I'm sorry, this is our superintendent's pastor also, Reverend Barnes. Reverend Bracy is usually here. Remain standing, and I think Reverend Brown. Okay, but Reverend Bracy's in Eatonville. I mean, Reverend Barnes is in Eatonville. I keep getting the two of them. They've been in the same position. They have worked extremely hard with us, with the NAACP and the AACCC, which is a ministerial group that works extremely close with our superintendent, and every school board member up here. I do want to thank you all, because I think every board member up here, that you have touched Reverend Barnes in your life, as well as the other ministers. And I'm here to let you know, I don't know your faith, and I don't know your belief, but if you were in the pre-agenda meeting, one of the nurses spoke to us about the love in their life of having some type of strong faith to hold on to. And I want you to know, Reverend Barnes can let you know, and the other ministers, you got to have something strong to hold on to, because if you don't, it's hard to make it. I can't tell you what it is, but I know it's great when you have your pastor on your side. So, we thank you for being here, for your people, and for the school board. So, let's give our ministers a round of applause. Because, like some of you said, you wouldn't be here without Ron Duval, who I worked with at Apopka at Dream Lake. He was a 5th grade teacher. And you said you were a principal today because of him. I would not be here today if it's not for the ministers in our I would not be here today if it's not for the ministers in our district, the entire Orange County, from Annapacca to Zellwood, you just name it, I would not be here. And I want to just thank you. So Dr. Jenkins, with that in mind, you may release your newly appointed administrators and their families. All right? And Bill Sublett always say, go get ice cream. I agree. Go get ice cream. We will go ahead now and start the business portion of our agenda, the main portion, as it deals with the adoption of our agenda and our public hearings. At this time, Dr. Jenkins, are there any changes to the agenda?
Madam Chair, there are addendum item 3.01. The PDF was added after the release of the book. Item 503, for full exclusion, is withdrawn until we can have a hearing. Addendum for the following items, which had information added after the release of the book, under construction, phase 3 documents, item 1207 and 1209, 1211, award of contract for Level Elementary School. And then an addendum to 1211, which is a request to approve award of bid for Level Elementary School. The change in the subject line is due to the timing of this board meeting, noting McCree Design Builders. Addendum to item 1401, PDF was added after the release of the book. And finally, an addendum, item 1601, PDF was added.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. The Chair finds cause to amend the agenda as requested. Board members, you have heard those changes. What is your pleasure?
I move the approval of the agenda as amended.
It was second by Mr. Roach and Ms. Caddell and moved by Ms. Robinson for the approval of the agenda. All those in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried and 7-0. Thank you so very much. At this particular time, we are moving on to number 3 on your agenda. If you can follow us in the audience, if you have them, the copies were outside the door. And if there's not one, we will get it for you. Public hearing, the first public hearing is 3.01, request adoption of millage to support 2014-15 tentative budget. I'm going to turn the floor over to Dr. Jenkins, in which she will be working with our chief financial officer, Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon. This is that time of year that we come around to annually as we've worked through our budgeting process. We are now prepared to recommend the millage. And our chief financial officer, Mr. Rick Collins, will take you through the brief presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. And after discussions with Vice Chair tonight, I think we're going to change the order a little bit tonight on how we go through this. We're going to go ahead and do the presentation on the millage. Then we'll have public comment on the millage, board discussion on the millage, and then the actual adoption of the millage, which is item 3.01. Then we'll move on to the discussion on the budget itself. Again, open for public comment there, board discussion, and then the adoption of the actual budget itself. So we'll follow that agenda going forward. First of all, I'd just like to make a few brief comments. I would like to thank all the folks that were involved in the process this year. We got a lot of community input, a lot of great input from the board members, especially at our work sessions. I really appreciate that. That really helps us to do a better job of putting our budget together. Dr. Jenkins, of course, and her senior staff, we received a great deal of input this year. And the principals provided input through the budgeting process. And I'd also like to thank my Office of Management and Budget staff, Dale Kelly and Judith Padres are here tonight as well. All right. First of all, we're going to talk about property taxes. Taxes are actually a function of assessed value after the Save Our Homes adjustment, exemptions, and the millage rate. Now, the property appraiser actually establishes the assessed value of the homes. You don't really have any, any say in that. The state legislature actually establishes the exemptions. But the state legislature and the school board establishes the millage rates, and I'll explain that a little better as we go forward. Looking at last year's estimated taxable values, I want to show you this. This is actually the slide I gave you from last year. Now, this is this year. So you can, I'll toggle back a little bit. You can see what's happened is that we've actually had an increase in the local property values. That's good for us. That actually helps, helps provide some relief in our, in our budgeting process. But it also, I want to carefully present this because just because our tax base expands, does that necessarily mean that the school district receives all of that money because of an equalization process that takes place at the state level? And I'll explain that also a little later on. But the good news is that the tax base is expanding and the property values are increasing. So that's good for all of our citizens. Looking at the millage rate comparison, I'll go through each of these and show you and explain what they are, and then tell you a little bit about, a little bit about each of the various millages. The required local effort is the state millage. That's what the state says, that you must levy in order to participate in the Florida Education Finance Program and to receive any state money. And you'll notice that that particular millage rate actually is proposed to go up. This school board does not, you can either levy none or levy all of it, but you can't levy anything in between. If you levy this amount, then you will receive your state dollars from the state, and you'll also receive the money from the actual levy. If you decide to levy none of it, then you'll receive none of the property taxes, and you'll also receive none of the money from the state. So that's really not a good option for the school board. You will notice again that it does go up this year, 0.112 mil increase. It's about an overall increase of about 1.34% in your total millage rate. But that's the only millage that is proposed to actually increase for this upcoming year. The, one other point, I mentioned it earlier, is this particular millage rate is equalized at the state level. So when, when you collect, when we collect the taxes associated with this millage, it just goes into our, the calculation formula at the state level. So actually, the more that you collect locally, the less money that the state has to put in to the pot. So it's actually an equalization process. They determine a total amount, and if you, if you gain more in local property taxes, then you get less in state funding. So that's where that required local effort is equalized. The discretionary millage, you can levy up to the 0.748 mils. That is the maximum amount you can levy. You can levy any amount up to that amount. So that, this is the maximum amount. Now, one of the advantages of levying that amount is that it also gets compressed to the state average. So if, because Orange County actually generates slightly less than the state average with that particular millage, we get compressed up to the state average, and we actually generate about another $7.4 million in state dollars because we levy that particular millage. Now, if you decided to levy something more than 0.498 mils, but less than the 0.748, it would get equalized to half of that. Or actually, excuse me, it would get, it would get equalized to 0.498 mils. So essentially, by levying this small amount of local discretionary millage, you also get a big bump from the state to do that. The additional voted millage is the amount of millage, of course, that the voters approved back in 2010 for a four-year period. It generates approximately, or the estimate for this year is about $92.6 million. And that money stays here. Every penny that is generated from the additional voted millage stays in Orange County and is used for the kids here in Orange County. It's not equalized in any manner. It stays here in Orange County. The final millage is the Capital Projects Millage, 1.5 mils. Just to kind of give you a brief history lesson, back in 2002, when the referendum was passed on the sales tax, we agreed to roll our millage rate back to 1.5. So beginning with the 2003-04 fiscal year, that was done. And it stayed at 1.5. Over the years, however, the state millage, which, which used to be, the maximum used to be at 2, it actually got rolled back to 1.75 mils in the 2008-09 year. And then it got rolled back again in the 2009-10 year, back to 1.5. So now the state maximum is now at 1.5 mils. So that's where we're at currently. So if you look at all of those millages, millage rates, the total for all of the millages is 8.474 mils with an overall increase of 0.112 mils. Now, we have to compare our millage rate to something called the rollback rate. And it's hard to explain, but I'll, if you read the slide, that's kind of what it, what it is. It's the rate, when applied to the current tax rule, after adjusting for any new growth, produces the same revenues as the prior year. Essentially, what we're trying to do is eliminate the impact of increases in assessed values. Now, one thing that I will point out is that the rollback rate does not take into consideration any increases in costs that the school district may, may be incurring, does not take into consideration any growth that way we may be experiencing, or any inflationary impact. And also, just because the, the comparison to the rollback rate is an increase, it doesn't necessarily mean that all, that money is coming to us. Because I talked to you earlier about the fact that, that our millage gets equalized statewide. So just want to point those things out as we're, as we're discussing the millage rate. It is compared to our current proposed millage. Now, the required local effort portion of your millage is 8.93% over the rollback rate. And that's the rollback rate. I just explained what that is. Keep in mind that the majority of that increase is the increase in assessed values of properties, the increase in taxable values of the properties, not the increase in the, in the millage rate itself. Looking at the total millage, it's 8.02% over the rollback rate. There again, the vast majority of that is because of the increase in assessed values, not because of the slight increase in the millage rate. Looking at an individual homeowner who has the Save Our Homes, if they own the home and the home value increases, there is a cap on how fast the home value can increase. It's a limit of 3% per year, or the Consumer Price Index change from one year to the next, whichever is, is less. In this case, the change in the Consumer Price Index was less. It's only 1.5%. So the individual homes can only escalate for this year at a rate of 1.5% because of the Save Our Homes limitation. Now, there are some homes out there that do not have the Save Our Homes limitation, and they can escalate faster. But based on a typical home that did escalate in value for this year, we were estimating that the, because of the millage change and because of the increase of the 1.5% that's allowed on each individual home, the net change in taxes would be about $32 for that particular homeowner, which represents about $2.67 a month. Now, looking at a commercial piece of property that's worth $1 million, they do not have the Save Our Homes limitation. There is a 10% limitation there, so they generally would not bump into that. And they do not have any kind of homestead exemption. So whatever the commercial value is, is basically what they're going to pay the taxes on. So in this case, because of the escalating value in the, in the property, and because of the small increase in the, the millage rate, the owner would pay about $630 more in taxes this year, again, primarily because the escalating values of the property. $630 per year are about $52.50 per month. Okay, that pretty much concludes the brief presentation on the millage rates. So if, Madam Superintendent, I'll turn that back over to you if you want to have any comments, and then we'll just open it up for public comments at that point.
I have asked our chief financial officer if there is a simpler way to explain the rollback value. I know that sometimes raises concerns. I think he, he has made it as simple as possible. We'll certainly make that available to our general public. The notion that rising property values is actually what is reflected in that number and that percentage calculation is critical for folks to understand. I also like the very simple representation provided for a typical homeowner at a certain price. We're talking $32 a month and $2 and...
$32 for the year.
$32 for the year and $2.74 per month, I believe. That was the number that he phrased. We think that's responsible, $2.67 per month. And so we think that is very responsible management on our part and on the part of the board. And as he very clearly stated, most of it is what is required in order to benefit from state funding. So we're happy to answer any questions you might have before you take action on the millage, and then we'll get to the budget.
All right. Madam Superintendent, with that in mind, I would like to ask, is there an explanation that will be on our website? Because he did really explain it. Will he be verbal, as the slides are showing? Did you all do a little video, for those who wouldn't understand the charts there? We may want, might want to, I don't know, Rick might, would like to do that.
Yeah, we can work on that, Madam Chair. The PowerPoints will be up immediately. It'll take staff some time, but we'll work on that.
All right. Very good. Because, because his explanation of the charts would help a regular layperson to maybe understand it a little bit better, especially when it comes to the millage and the rollback rate. Okay, thank you. With that in mind, we will open it up for public comments, followed by board discussion. And we do have Diana Moore, and she will be speaking on 3.01, the 1-mil language. And Ms. Moore, as you come before the, in approach to podium, we would like for you to give your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Diana Moore, 1020 Webster Avenue, speaking on behalf of the Orange County Classroom Teachers Association. I brought with me my budget from last year that you had done your presentation on. There you go. And I noticed it's about an 8.5% increase over the rollback rate. So I'm still not quite sure I understand that difference, but I think you said it's the increase in the assessed value. So I want to clarify my understanding first on that. And then I would like to speak about the 1-mil. I know that tonight you're considering placing language on the ballot in November to continue the 1-mil tax on our properties. And I don't think most of our taxpayers are again supplementing the tax base in Orange County and having it used in our school system. I think our problem is how it is being sent, being spent, and seeing how it is being spent. And so I've done some record requests to gain information on some particular language that is in the prior ballot language, and it was how we retain and attract highly qualified teachers. And the answer I received by email was that we saved 700 jobs. Now, that might indicate retaining teachers, but I'm not really sure how it retains highly qualified teachers in the last four years. So I'm looking for information on specific programs that that may have been used for. As I looked through the budget and the salary that had been bargained over the last four years, with the addition of the 1-mil in Orange County, teachers received a 1.3% raise or their step. They received a $750 bonus that was not added to their salary. The third year, they received a step or 1.3% of their salary. And last year, they received the implementation of performance pay. And last year, they received the implementation of performance pay. So, I think I'd like to ask if the school board would consider doing something like a 501(c)(3), where you would appoint community members, maybe teachers, to be part of that organization and present quarterly reports that the public could see how that money is being used. I, I think this is going to pass, but I think there's some concern on the transparency of where the money is, is going. And if we could educate the public on that and assure them that there was a committee of the community looking at those numbers, getting quarterly reports, et cetera, I think that it would have a good chance of passing. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so very much. And I know that staff took your questions down. I also copied them on the back of yours, and the superintendent will address you, and our staff will be working closely with you. Thank you for that, and thank you for your recommendations of the 501(c)(3). Probably committee in lieu of what the committee in which Ms. Cadel is working with. Okay, I don't see anyone else speaking on the 3.01, so at this time, I will open up to the board, and our first speaker will be, if you will just follow in that order, Ms. Moore, then Mr. Roach, then Ms. Cadel, and then Dr. Jenkins wants to add something. I would, do you want to speak now, Dr. Jenkins, on that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to clarify, the actual ballot language speaks to retaining teachers, not attracting. We actually have the language here in front of us, and it, in essence, was keeping us from laying off teachers, which an $80 million deficit would have required of us. But the language specifically says retain. I think we've mentioned this two or three times previously. That language actually says retain. And annually, as the ballot language requires, we have a report that goes out to our community at large and to, in every student's backpack, that actually gives an accounting of those dollars. I just wanted the general public to be aware of that. That is already the case.
And I thank you for that, and I know that that's very helpful for Ms. Moore.
Excuse me, I'd like to call a point of order. We are talking about, this is the millage that we have to announce and publish. The conversation we are having now happens later in the agenda, when the ballot language is discussed.
Absolutely, Ms. Cadel, but she just wanted to get it in, because I do not believe she signed up again. She was speaking to 3.01, but she just threw in that question, and we added it in, and I'm sure that our staff will be working with you, Ms. Moore. Thank you so much, Ms. Cadel, and thank you, Superintendent, for that great explanation. At this time, the board discussion will begin with Ms. Moore, then Mr. Roach, and Ms. Gould. And this is, as Ms. Cadel said, on the adoption of the millage, to support the tentative budget. And Ms. Moore was kind of addressing the budget.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Gordon. I know that most of us here are students of this budget and have taken time to go out of town, part of our board development, to study, and it really did take a week of a class to, to even begin to understand it. And yet, after all of that, this is my, probably my sixth or seventh budget now, since being on the board, and, and when I opened up the paper, and Channel 9 was calling all of us for interviews on Friday, and thank you, Mr. Roach, you finally told them yes, because of, but anyway, you opened that newspaper up, and you see that rollback rate, and it just so is different. It's like a foreign animal to what the municipalities and the county does. And even me, I was like, 8% increase? You know, you go, oh, my goodness, people are going to go, why do they have to do a half penny, or why do they even have to consider a one-mill? And so, I had Mr. Collins in my office again, go over it with me again. And it just is shocking, it's just absolutely shocking to me that the local taxpayers could see that kind of increase, because, thank goodness, we're, you know, we're approaching $100 billion of property value in the county, and there's another, I think, 1.5 billion of new property on the roll. And it, it just really upsets me to think that that money goes to Tallahassee, but we have no assurances that that increase comes back for our kids. It just means the state is off the hook. It drives me nuts. So I, you know, I'm glad that Mr. Collins brought that up, and I wanted to make that point again. And the other, you know, a lot of the increases that we're seeing on the instructional side was because our governor decided a year ago, and I'm happy about it, very happy about it, to give the teachers additional pay. And so now, you see some of these budgets creeping up, and then you, and it doesn't account for all the new students. I guess we're still growing at about 3,000. So I have a really, I have consternation, you know, for trying to explain this to the public, who didn't even have the opportunity that I have had to be to a week class on all this and sit here through six budget cycles. So, that's why I think it's important we take time out to say it is difficult, and certainly come and talk to any of us, we'll try to help you some more. One other thing, Mr. Collins, that keeps coming up in the paper, there's been several articles, and I wish you would comment on, because I really thought that when you did all of the expenditures that were not recurring, it was a terrific list, and I saw on there, you had a line item for the lowest 300 schools, and I, and, you know, there's been this debate going on about, the legislature said that it certainly should be covered out of our SAI dollars, yet you had to reflect the number of schools that we had coming out of recurring. So that is my question to you this evening.
Yes, ma'am, and, and I'll get more into that as we start actually discussing the details of the budget. But looking at the millage rates itself, the millage rate did not go up specifically to address the 300 schools statewide. They did not raise the millage rate, and they did not increase state funding to specifically address that as well. So there was no specific appropriation made by the state or change in millage rates to address the cost associated with providing the additional hour of instruction to the lowest 300 elementary schools in reading. They did specify in the appropriation bill that we would use the SAI dollars as well as the supplemental, which is the supplemental academic instruction dollars, as well as the supplemental reading instruction dollars to pay for it. However, the supplemental academic instruction dollars were only increased sufficient to cover the workload increase of the additional 3,000 students that we have this year, and the supplemental reading instruction dollars did not even go up sufficient to cover maybe half of that. So there were no additional dollars placed into the categorical funds to specifically address the lowest 300 schools in reading.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore. Mr. Roach, you are up for the discussion of the millage at this particular time, which is in support of the 2014-15 tentative budget. So your, your comments and discussion.
Well, I had, I had several constituents recently approached me about, why are we asking for this particular extension when, quote, "they pay taxes already"? And I think it was a good question, and I, and I tried to answer it this way, and that is, if we had been funded appropriately, we wouldn't be doing this. And I think Rick just kind of mentioned that. I mean, the way I understand it, for since 2007, we're, we're getting $2,007, and that's minus the cost of inflation and the other factors. So it's really less money now than 2007. That's why we ask the community to, to work with us on this, and they have. And I will tell you that that makes a difference for kids. It's the services we offer kids, it's our ability not to slice teachers, when other districts have done that, teacher positions. And, and, you know, we've lived it. Board members, when we go to conventions, we, we are sitting next to other counties who do not have the community step up, and it's sad. I will tell you, historically, I'll give you a little history, I was on this board when we did not have that, when the funding was low. And we actually had discussions and board workshops about where we were going to cut, and it was not pretty. At that point, I think Mr. Dennis Smith was the superintendent, and he talked about having our bus loops would become athletic tracks. We would run track meets on the bus loops. I think he was kidding, I hope. But the bottom line is, we really, you know, we were talking about concrete pits for classroom that you hose down between periods. But it was really sad to see that. And then our, our state workshops, of course, were workshops on how to cut the budget. Imagine that. Here's, here's the, the top 100 ways to cut your school services and your budget, was the, was what board members were learning back in those days. So what the public, I, I hope that they'll all know, when they do this, this extra $2 or $3 a month, this is just, this is a big, big pop for kids. And so, I just thought I would throw that in there, because this is something we have not had to talk about for a long time, and I don't wish that on any board member sitting here.
Mr. Roach, thank you so very much. Ms. Gould, your point on the millage?
You know, I, I have also been getting questions from the constituent base about the dollars and, and trying to get everybody to understand. And one of the things that I say is, money doesn't solve all problems. That, that is a given. Money does not solve all problems. However, there is a certain point where you regress if you do not have enough money to get, put the tools and the right people in place. And so, when we start to talk about this, I do share the gap, not only with inflation, but where we are on per-student spending. I also talk about the investment that this community has made, so that we would not take 10 steps back during the recession, but we would continue to move our education system and our students forward, and elevating their successes in trying to create a great workforce and career path for our kids. So I, I think you could get really lost in the formulas that we have to deal with in the rollback numbers, but at the end of the day, I think we maximize every dollar possible, and the results are showing up year after year, when the curriculum and the judgment on that curriculum becomes more stringent, yet our teachers, our students, and our families rally and still elevate forward. And that's where that investment truly goes. Without that extra millage that we're going to have, we would be on the edge of a cliff. And I'm not sure if we'd stay on, on solid ground, or we'd tip over because it would crumble out from under us. So, we don't now want to change the trajectory that we're on in any way, shape, or form. We want to be able to increase that. We need to do it prudently. I never am, you know, having run a lot of 501(c)(3)'s, I love the idea of transparency. I think we can get that information, and if there's ways to make it easier to get it, I'm all for that. However, I, I don't want anyone to think that the folks at this table, nor the staff, don't go over this with a fine-tooth comb and look at ROI and almost every single dollar, absolutely every single dollar that is in there. So, you got to look at what the return on that investment is, and I think that's the way that we explain this. If we want to be competitive, if we want to attract new businesses to this area and give them a qualified workforce and make people successful, this is the investment strategy.
There you go. Ms. Cadel?
Actually, it looks like Ms. Flynn's light is on, and I was going to go ahead and move the resolution. That's why my light was on, so let Ms. Flynn go, and then if you'll come back to me, I'll move the resolution.
Thank you, Mrs. Cadel, and thank you, Madam Chair. I, I just wanted to echo what board members Roach and Gould said, because since I've been on the board, we had, we had the cliff. It was in 2009, and schools had to cut, what was it, 6%? And I remember visiting a school, and the principal was saying, well, we don't have the money to fix the copier, because I wanted this extra position as a coach, and so one of our partners is making copies for us. I mean, that's what it had come down to. And, you know, our community and our students and our parents come to love these programs that they don't realize are funded by these dollars. I mean, when we were looking at school closures, athletics, cutting, cutting the schedules and cutting, I think we did cut, cut the schedules, cutting freshman sports, arts, music, some of those extracurricular, that's what this one mill, and that's what the millage helps us with. So I, I agree when people question, I tell them, well, here's, here's what you're paying for. And do you remember those town hall meetings where one part of the county wanted to keep their sports, the other part of the county said, get rid of them, get rid of them and keep the arts? So everyone had a value that they placed on programs and services that they expected. So I, this is just keeping us level with, with our expectations. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. So, Ms. Cadel, with that in mind?
I move, whereas Section 200.065 Florida statutes requires the school board adopt a proposed millage for funding the tentative budget and notify the property appraiser of its action. And whereas the 2014-15 tentative budget is based upon a total millage of 8.474 mills, which is more than the rollback rate by 8.02% as computed pursuant to Section 200.065 Florida statutes. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Orange County, Florida, that the board does hereby adopt the following proposed millage to support the tentative budget for the 2014-15 fiscal year. Required local effort, 5.226. Basic discretionary, .748. Additional voted, 1.000. Capital improvement, 1.500. Total, 8.474. Be it further resolved, the superintendent immediately informed the Orange County property, property appraiser of the action of the school board in the manner prescribed by law.
It has been moved and properly second by Mrs. Cadel, and Mrs. Cadel, I really would like to thank you for reading it into the records for us. I think it saved Mr. Collins, and I love to hear you read it, I really do. And we thank you for it, because it makes it clear for the record. It was properly, it was moved by Mrs. Board Member Cadel, and second by Ms. Robinson, what is the pleasure of this board, as it relates to the adoption of the millage. All those in favor of adopting the recommended resolution, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
And opposes, nay. Let the record reflect that the motion was carried 7-0. With that in mind, we turn it back over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The second portion of the presentation and public hearing provided is for the actual adoption of your tentative budget. As you all know, the actual formal budget is not adopted until September. We have to have a tentative budget adopted at this point as we start our fiscal year. Mr. Collins?
Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to just briefly talk about the timeline of the budget process. The budget process really goes on year-round. I mean, this board receives input from your constituents year-round. You provide that information to the superintendent. We had a budget committee meeting, met with our union representatives. The governor, governor's budget actually came out in February this year. The economic and demographic research data came out in March, legislative session, March and April. Our initial school budget allocations actually went in, in March. Remember the work sessions we had back in May and June, proposed millage, and but, the budget was advertised on July 25th, and then now here we are tonight for the public hearing. There will be one more public hearing, again, as, as Dr. Jenkins said, in, in September. So this is sort of a timeline. Keep in mind, again, the budget process is ongoing, it does continue. Looking at the, a very brief summary of the entire budget, it does continue to maintain our focus on our district's strategic plan. It does preserve the academic programs, retains highly qualified teachers, protects arts, athletics, and student activities, complies with both board policies as well state and federal requirements, and it includes the impact of collaborative bargaining, of the collaborative bargaining process to date. Here's a summary of the five funds that we will be asking you to adopt later on. You will notice that the Capital Projects Fund there shows a large difference from last year, and that's, again, noted in the footnote here, that the 2014-15 numbers only do not include the carryover projects. As we close out our fiscal year, those projects will be added to the Capital Projects budget at the time of the final adoption in September. The Special Revenue Fund currently only also includes the food service area. Any grants that will be approved that will also be part of the Special Revenue Fund will be amended into that budget later on. Let's talk a little bit about the General Fund. That is your operating budget for the district, $1.8 billion. The primary source of revenue is the Florida Education Finance Program. I refer to that a lot. I referred to that a little earlier as we were talking about millages. The funding is equalized per student statewide. Revenues are primarily from state sales taxes and local property taxes. This budget also includes the revenues from the additional voted millage not to exceed the four years. Looking at the estimated revenue, we have to start talking about the actual FTE or Full-Time Equivalent Students because that's how we're funded, based on our actual student enrollment. Currently, the forecast for this coming year is for 188,528 students as compared to last year of 185,510, so a growth of a little over 3,000 students. Now, this is, this is a slide you guys have seen over and over. I did, I did just draw the line instead of showing the little bar things on top for the Consumer Price Index. But I'll go through slowly and explain what it is for those who have not seen this. The bottom part shows the actual funding per student that we've received over the years. I won't go into all the details in these earlier years here because, you know, it was a combination of regular funding and federal funding that kind of bailed us out for a few years. But these gold bars here represent the special millage that the board has mentioned earlier we've been talking about. That stabilized this district. When we talk about the saving of the jobs, Dr. Jenkins mentioned that earlier, that's right here. When, when this money went away and we were gonna drop off to the, because the regular funding dropped all the way down to here, this money stabilized us, and that's, that's the money that's being used to continue the positions that we currently have in the district in some of the areas. It's also being used, again, to protect the arts, athletics, and student activities as well. The line on top actually reflects the Consumer Price Index. What would have happened if we had continued to be funded at the level that we were funded at on a per student basis in 2007-8? If you'll notice, the line kind of went up, and then it kind of came back down a little bit, and then it's been going up pretty steadily ever since. If you look at the difference over here where we, because, because right now it looks like, hey, we've fully recovered to where we were back in '07-'08. Everybody says, "All great, we're there." If we include the special millage, we're there, okay? But it doesn't take into consideration the, the economic impact of the inflationary pressures that have occurred over that time period. We're actually, the increase in regular funding from this year to this year actually went up about $148 per student or a 2.2% increase. So, earlier when we were talking about these large numbers of 8%, now the, the overall revenues in the FEFP only went up 2.2%. That's because of that equalization process we talked about earlier. Regular funding, which is again right here on the blue line, is still about $426 less than it was in 2007-8. So, if you look at the number there, look at the number there, it's a decline of about $426 per student. Now, if you look at the difference from here, which is the inflation-adjusted number down to here, it's almost $1,500 per student. So, in the absence of the special millage, we would be down about $1,500 per student. We're still down about $1,008 per student in purchasing power as compared to 2007-8. So, even though we are doing quite well, and we're doing quite well compared to many of our peers, we're still not at the funding levels that we were at back in 2007-8. We do not have the purchasing power that we had back then. Looking at the percentage of general revenue going to education, this is the pot of money. The general revenue is sort of the pot that the state legislature doles out and goes to the various programs throughout, throughout the state. Education, at the time that the Florida Lottery actually came into existence back here, was a little over, over 60% of the general revenue was going to education. That number currently is about 52%. So, you can see that a significant portion of funding has been shifted to other areas of the state budget. Speaking of the Florida Lottery, everybody always asks about the lottery, what's going on with the lottery dollars? Again, going back to the early years of the lottery, public education was getting about 60% to 70% of the total lottery dollars, and then you can see that that number actually ended up dropping over the years. We're currently around 32% of the total lottery dollars comes to public schools. That comes to public schools. Now, of that, and keep in mind, this was the Educational Enhancement Lottery. Only about 24% of that is actually for Educational Enhancement, which is your school recognition program. The rest of that money just goes right into your base FEFP program or into workforce dollars to support your post-secondary institution. So, the, the only portion of the public school, which is the green line, that goes towards enhancement is about 24% of that, which is, goes towards your school recognition program. Looking at the estimated revenues in total for the general fund, there was a shift this year of about 2% from state sources to local sources. If you go back to last year's numbers compared to this year's numbers, it's almost exactly 2% where they shifted the burden to Orange County Public Schools taxpayers, essentially. In fact, if you look at the second FEFP calculation and look at the dollars that came from the state, the increase in dollars for this year was around $52 million. That covers the 3,000 additional students and about a 2.2% increase. Of that 51.8 million, $1.7 million of it came from the state. The rest came from the local property tax. So, that, that's that equalization process that I was talking about earlier where basically the state shifted that burden onto the local taxpayer here in Orange County. Now, let's move into appropriations. Again, I'd like to thank the board for all of their input into this process. We really appreciate it and, and really helped, helped us in developing this budget. Again, one of the priorities of the board was compensation and benefits. We do have dollars included in the budget for that. We have staff development dollars, about $14 million for additional staff development, pre-K center at the Richmond Heights area, additional mental health counselors, guidance counselor increase of about $1.5 million. We modified the actual allocation of guidance counselors, universal gifted screening for second grade, that, that was added. Digital curriculum increased about $4.6 million. State and national academic travel, about $100,000 for that purpose. We heard you about maintenance and custodial improvements. That's moving forward. Safety and security enhancements. I didn't put specific dollars on those because, especially the safety and security, that we can talk to you in an executive session about those particular safety and security enhancements that we put into effect. Also, from some of our grants, the CT certificate programs were increased, and also the city year program was also expanded out of some grants that we were able to acquire. Some of the legally mandated increases this year, the retirement rate increase, it's gonna cost us about another $3.5 million in order to continue to participate in the Florida retirement system. The additional period, $4.3 million is the number that we have on it currently. That number is still being solidified, I'll, I'll be honest with you, but, and it could be actually a little more than this. Going back to Ms. Moore's question earlier, that has to be paid for theoretically out of the SAI supplemental academic instruction and the supplemental reading categorical dollars, even though they were not increased sufficient to cover it. So, we're basically paying for that out of our non-recurring dollars. Digital classroom supplemental allocation, that's actually a new categorical allocation this year from the state, $1.7 million. We will use that money according to a plan that we have to develop and submit to Tallahassee by October. The EOC exam expansion, about $1.1 million. We're continuing to sustain the TIF and Race to the Top dollars, and some, some of the requirements of those grants was that you sustain those certain programs, and we've kind of wrapped that into our performance pay system. And then, of course, this summer program to meet some of our virtual class requirements. Some of our kids had not taken the one virtual class, so we had to offer a program to make sure that those kids could graduate. Some of the other cost changes, again, healthcare, about $6.8 million. Represents about a 5% increase in the cost there. Utility rate increases, about $2.8 million. Increase in diesel fuel, the bilingual program, and then the suspension center expansion with our partners with the county and the city. Now, in general, looking at a level of service based on this budget that was put together, the school level of service is maintained with some improvements. We, we continue to hold harmless, especially our high schools due to the FTE recalibration. We've talked about that, how there was a actual reduction in FTE at the high schools because of kids that were taking classes at virtual schools, especially Florida Virtual School. And so, we've kind of, we tried to hold them harmless so that there was no economic impact on their operations at the high school because of a state law change. Departmental level of service generally was maintained with some expansion in the area of assessment and also in the area of safety and security as well. Looking at functional budgeted appropriations by function, you'll notice, I'll point out, the general support area actually went up here, which causes the rest of them to come down a little bit because this is a percentage of the total. Two of the big issues, items there in that general support area is a new student information system that we are acquiring and implementing during this coming year, and also a learning management system that goes along with that, that we are also acquiring and implementing, as well as the early stages of the implementation of a, a new business system. We're also looking at a new business system, either a re-implementation of our existing system or a new system. That process is ongoing, so there will be some costs associated with that. But that, that blip in your general support actually causes an impact on your other functional Some of the future issues that this board needs to be aware of and concerned about, of course, is, number one, of course, is the conclusion of the special millage revenue after the 2014-15 year. Again, that 90-some-odd million, and that's actually growing, so we expect by next year that number will be closer to $100 million a year. Is filling a big hole in our operations for the district, so that would be a huge loss should that not be extended. The Florida standards assessment, the costs associated with that, the digital curriculum expansion, continued impact on our FTE due to virtual and charter schools as more kids move into the charter schools and into virtual education, that is having an impact on our traditional schools. The last one is retirement changes, potential restructure. That could be a huge cause to the district at some point in the future. That did not pass this past legislative session, but it, it does come up every year, so you just need to be aware of it and keep your eyes on it. All right. Capital projects fund, briefly, budget $1.2 billion. Primary source, sales tax, property tax, impact fees. Those are your big three. Did get a little bit of PICO money this year, about $3.6 million out of the $1.2 billion. Here's the revenues. That little blue thing up there in the top is the PICO money. So, we did get a little bit of PICO this money for the first time in, in several years. But the critical part of this graph, I think, is, is this is the sales tax revenue, and you can see what happens, this is the next, this is this coming year, the following year, and then, of course, it goes away in December 26, 2015, excuse me, the 15-16 year, it actually goes away mid-year. So, that will, as you have already voted, is on the ballot for the, the primary election, and hopefully that will be successful so that we can continue many of the renovations and enhancements to our facilities that are needed. Again, this is the way that the dollars are planned to be used for the upcoming year. The capital renewal dollars that we're spending is included in this district-wide capital. And just so you know how much we're spending on debt service still, I mean, we, we did borrow a lot of money to pay for schools over the last several years. We're currently paying a little over $110 million in just debt service every year. Looking at the five-year new school openings, we don't have any opening in August as far as new schools, but in August of 2015, we're looking at two new elementary schools. 2016, we're looking at an elementary, a K-8, and a middle school. And then, in 2017, right now, we're looking at an elementary, a middle, and a, and hopefully a high school, should things work out well. And then, of course, in 2018, none at that point. Okay, moving on to the comprehensive renovation projects, we're gonna continue the current list, comply with our settlement agreement, bring each school up to prototype quality into the five-year enrollment projection. Essentially, we're, we're continuing the program. As you know, once the election happens in August, that may change all of this, so we will have to take a look and see what, you know, what happens after August. But right now, based on what we know, this budget includes the dollars that we know about, not the dollars we don't know about. Currently, the projection is through the completion of project number 92 plus the Washington Shores Elementary School project that just wrapped up, as a matter of fact. Looking at the comprehensive projects for construction for this coming year, Lake Weston, Lake Whitney, Clay Springs, Lovel, and Apopka. Looking at the projects for design would be Lockhart, Riverside, Dream Lake, Carver, Tangelo Park, and Dover Shores. Just, just a quick note, this does not include the project number 131K8E5 because that project was funded in earlier years. We've just been bringing forward the dollars. That's the K-8 project that would be nearby here. Some of the other capital issues that you should be aware of, you know, again, the conclusion of the sales tax authorization on December 31st. A successful extension will require extensive amendment to the current capital plan. Mr. Morris has already presented some of the, how that, those dollars would be used going forward, so it would require extensive modification going forward to our capital plan. Our ability to issue new cops is still limited. As I mentioned earlier, still spending about $110 million on old cops, so we would have to have our property values come back pretty significantly before we would have the ability to issue additional new cops. Okay, technology's gonna continue to be an issue for our, in our capital area as well as our safety and security needs. Debt service fund, it's where we pay for our long-term debt. Current budget's $209 million, accumulates resources for paying off the long-term debt. Special revenue currently only includes the money for the food service program. Currently, not, we're not forecasting an increase in the meal prices in that program. And again, we will amend any federal grant dollars into the special revenue fund as those grants come forward. Internal service fund is a total budget of $273 million, and it's used to account for three different areas, the Employee Benefit Trust Fund, the Property Casualty Loss Fund, and Printing Services. Employee Benefit Trust Fund, $235 million. It's funded by board contributions for employees and deductions for their dependents. That's where we pay for our medical payments and charges for the services. And we did modify the plans for the current year to comply with the Affordable Care Act. As I mentioned earlier, it does include a 5% increase in the district contributions. Property casualty fund is where we pay for our property liability and workers' comp claims, and then Printing Services is funded through chargebacks to other funds. Okay, that pretty much concludes my presentation on the budget. We'll go through the same process, Madam Chairman, of public comment, and then board discussion, and then adoption.
Thank you, thank you so very much, Mr. Collins, for a great explanation of the tentative budget. I really, really appreciate that. We have a lot of speakers, so I'm gonna ask you probably, Madam Superintendent, did you have a comment before the speakers?
Yes, Madam Chair. Just as a close, I'd like to remind the audience that we have, for several months, been reviewing our budget. While board members have, may have limited questions tonight, that is because they have had significant opportunities, both individually with staff and in our previous work sessions on the budget. I'd also like to mention how useful it has been to go through that process throughout the year, but I have to, again, thank our community because we are not looking at ways to trim our budget, at least for this year. We still have funds in place. We still have funds in place from the generosity of our voters, and so we are looking at minimal increases, mostly due to what is required of us by the state, such as in our accountability efforts, and some of our safety needs as well. But we've tried to limit any additions that extend beyond what is required and beyond our control. Like to also mention, because I had a question come to me earlier, clearly, we understand we've not had our collective bargaining process completed with our employees. At this point, it is a tentative budget, this is the same process we go through every year. There have been very few instances where bargaining's been completed long before the July tentative budget. But at this board's pleasure, we do have preparations for that, and that collective bargaining process will continue. In fact, they have a session that is scheduled for tomorrow. That is not something we actually go through outside of our executive session, so I'd like to note that for the general public as well. Certainly, very hopeful that we'll have teacher pay raises and the rest of our employees' pay raises in place, perhaps by the time we have our September adoption of the final budget. We can certainly hope as much. We are eager to hear any additional discussion or questions from the board prior to taking our next steps, Madam Chair.
Well, Madam Superintendent, we really thank you for those comments, and they are very, very important. And again, I do thank Mr. Collins. And I'm going to ask Mr. Collins, as we have a number of speakers, and to you, Madam Superintendent, and board members, if there is a question that comes up when they're giving their public comment, and it can be answered, Mr. Collins, in this meeting, I would ask that maybe you do it, if it can be answered, so it would not have to linger, or either, if it is, if we may need to meet with that person following this board meeting. So I'm going to ask the superintendent and her staff to help us get through this, that we would make sure that the public be able to have a good discussion and make sure that they understand the budget as well. With that in mind, Regina Hallinger is first, followed by Mark Erwin Mitchell. And please remember that you will have, what is it, it's three minutes, three minutes, and please give us your name and address. And Ms. McGill, I think, our general counsel, Willie Rodriguez, is keeping the time for us. How are you doing today?
I am wonderful.
Very good.
Thank you for having me. My name is Regina Hallinger. My address is 2715 Runyon Circle, Orlando, Florida, 32837. Madam Chair, thank you for having me, and everyone else on the board. I do have a handout, may I pass it out for you?
If you would give it to Mr. Collins, he would give it to us, so you would not lose your time. Okay, because we want to, and you can give her a couple of seconds back. Please put about a couple of seconds that she moved around so she can get her complete three minutes.
I have a clarifying question, followed by some information, and then another question. The first question is, we're having a $4.6 million increase to the amount of spending that we're making with our digital curriculum. I am wondering what the percent that is of total spending on curriculum. I know that the state is requiring us to have 50% of our spending on digital curriculum by the 2015-2016 school year, and I'm wondering if we are close to that or over that. And the reason why that is a concern of mine is because I've been going around the district talking to a lot of school leaders, parents, teachers, and one of the big concerns that they have is that we are moving very quickly in areas in which they need more time to adapt and do things, learn things, like digital curriculum, before they have to pass that learning on to students. In addition to that, I have other qualitative data that I'd like to share with you, as well as the quantitative data that you have in front of you that makes me concerned. Some stories, such as students in middle school who are using the digital curriculum really getting very frustrated with math, students who are math lovers, but when they're working out their problems and they're entering it into their iPad or whatever it is that they're using, because they don't have a space before their answer, they're being told that their answer is wrong, and they're redoing their math only to find that they're actually unlearning good learning because they think they're doing it wrong, and it's all because of glitches in the system. Other examples are that we have one IT person per school still, and yet the amount of technology that they have to maintain is growing dramatically because every student in that school has a device that has to be maintained. Other teachers are dealing with students who do not bring their device to school or have lost it, or it's broken, and there aren't backup textbooks. So these are some of the qualitative concerns I have with us moving at a pace quicker than maybe in the best interest of our students. If you want to look at the quantitative data that I have given to you, these are the results of last year's FCAT scores, and these are for our schools that were part of our pilot program with digital curriculum. And if you look at the first page, we have our third grades in our, the three schools that piloted the program. And while the district average showed a drop of 2% in students that scored satisfactory in the FCAT, which is level three or above, the average of these schools actually dropped 14%, as well as in math, while the district remained flat from the year before, it was showing no change, that the schools that had the digital curriculum actually dropped an average of 12%. So my concern is our return on investment as a business owner. Is this a good thing to continue to increase the amount of money we are spending, or do our children deserve their spending to go to something that's been proven to be more valuable?
Thank you very much. Okay, and we took down your questions, and we will address them for you, those that we can, and then the ones that our staff will be getting with you. We thank you so very much. The next person will be Mr. Mitchell, followed by Ms. Diana Moore and Ms. Cindy Hamilton.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Mark Erwin Mitchell. I'm the new executive director of the Orange County Service Unit, which is composed of the Classroom Teachers Association and OESPA here in Orange County.
Well, welcome.
Thank you, thank you, I'm glad to be here. Teachers and their union are perplexed and concerned that you're at the point of considering and adopting a 14-15 budget, when your management team has informed teachers as early as last week that you had not yet held an executive session to brief them on teachers' compensation. Specifically, the teachers proffered two compensation proposals in May and in June, and so they're very hopeful to be able to engage in meaningful discussions with regard to those proposals in the very near future. The legislative session is long closed, and you, as a board, have considerable certainty about the resources available for this school year, yet your representatives has reportedly not been directed by you with regard to teacher pay. So we look forward to your direction to their, to your team and having those discussions. Orange County teachers faced an incredibly tumultuous school year last year with regard to their pay and their union contract. Changes in their work lives will mount further this year, and it's only fair and in the spirit of good management that you direct your efforts to examine teacher raises and direct your staff to forthwith discuss and bargain in good faith with the CTA's bargaining team a fair compensation adjustment for the 14-15 school year. Orange County teachers will be going above and beyond for their students every day this school year, often under very, very challenging working conditions. Please afford them the respect and consideration they are due by instructing your management staff to bargain 14-15 teacher compensation now, not later, now. Thank you for your consideration. I look forward to speaking with you in the weeks and months to come.
And we look forward to working with you. We thank you for those comments, and I think our heart resonated as you spoke each word. Thank you so very much, and welcome to Orange County, Mr. Mitchell.
Madam Chair, I think he needed to say his name and address for the record, or did we get?
Right, and Mr. Mitchell gave his, and Diana Moore, Ms. President of CTA, if you could give for the record, again, your name and address. Thank you.
1020 Webster Avenue, for both of us.
Yes.
It's 804. That's the office, let me just clarify that.
And it's on the card here, but I just, he's learning. You really sleep there, and we know you do.
The financial picture in Florida is, looks like a roller coaster due to the fact that we don't have a sales tax in our state. And so when times are good, the roller coaster goes up, and when times are bad and we don't see the economy and the tourists come here, we pull back and we dip, and the economy dips. And our employees have waded through that dip for the good times, only to hear that our school board's not going to place a salary proposal on the table at our last bargaining session. Now, it was good to hear that we are going to hear good news, hopefully tomorrow, but I do want to ask, what was the instructional line item for last year, and what is the instructional item, line item for this year? Because I am looking at this graph, and I don't know if this works, but it does show a dip. So as we are continuing to increase and get into a good time, this bar graph continues to drop. So I'm interested in that number as we are looking at that chart. I would also like to say that we would like our teachers to catch up to the national average. They're about $10,000 behind the national average, and after last year, we're working our way back. And so with the economy being in a good time...
Ms. Moore, continue to talk, and we'll get Eddie to pick that for you, okay? We'll give you three more seconds.
Our teachers often work many hours beyond the 37 and 1/2 that they are paid for, and as exempt employees, they cannot get overtime for the many hours that they do work overtime. They actually donate tens of thousands of dollars to the school district that we don't really see in that budget in overtime hours, and I know that the public always supports them and thanks them for that. But morale has been low since the implementation of a new law requiring that teachers' pay be tied to high-stakes testing, and many of these teachers are evaluated on students that they don't teach. Now, we are glad that the state legislature finally corrected that oversight, and our teachers will be evaluated on their own students. Now, the problem is that next year, Orange County has written end-of-course exams, and that was done this summer, and we will have two tracks of teacher evaluation. We will have those teachers that will be evaluated on end-of-course exams that really have not been validated with a three-year history, and we will have teachers that are giving tests given by the state, and you know we have a new test coming in, that they have no idea, because this is being tested in Utah as far as where the questions will be coming from. So we really have two different tracks of evaluation. So we are asking that funds be spent to validate those tests. We would like to see less money spent on legal proceedings, and so in conclusion, our analysis of the comprehensive financial report is that we continue to see additional revenue come in after the budget is posted, and less expenditures leaving with a $42 million excess. And from 2009, our general fund has grown from $71 million to $413 million. That's a trajectory that speaks that we are saving dollars, and there's a question there.
Okay, Ms. Moore, we really thank you so much, and I know that I took a lot of notes here in comparison, and we're going to try to address a couple of them, Dr. Jenkins, and to Mr. Collins, he's still over there, to address some. I think you and Mr. Mitchell summed it up well about the bargaining in good faith and above and beyond, because our teachers have gone above and beyond in Orange County, and I just think that that's wonderful. I think you addressed about getting the national average, and that would be something that you all will be able to work on in good faith, which I just think that's wonderful. And then anything else that Dr. Jenkins will address at the end when we get through with all of the speakers. So they're taking notes and making comments, and I thank you so very much, Ms. Moore. And Ms. Hamilton, and then, when Ms. Hamilton, will you please give us your name and address? Then we will be followed by Mr. Gunter, Fraser Gunter, and then Mr. Chadwick Hardy.
My name is Cindy Hamilton. I represent Opt-Adt Orlando. My address is 4199 Tomassacourt, 32812. Today, after much anticipation, the new testing calendar was released. It is four pages long, and it starts with kindergarten testing on August 18th. Four pages is a lot for Orange County public school parents to understand and absorb, including the costs of those tests. We talked about the $4.6 million for digital increase, and Dr. Jenkins, I remember when you spoke at the Florida Department of Education, we talked, you talked about a figure, I believe, was $229 million to implement digital. And I'm, I asked, first of all, what does, what does that figure represent? Also, we talked, you talked about a $1.1 million increase for the EOCs, and I'm wondering, how does that break down in regards to those who are writing it and contracts with test banks that we have signed already? We'd also really like to know, what is the impact of charter transfers on our budget? You talked about it in the presentation as something that we have to look at for the future. Is there a projection at this point, and if not, when will we know those figures? How kids pulling out of Orange County public schools and entering into charters with vouchers? The other thing that we would like to know is, in regards to technology spending, how much of that supports high-stakes testing, and how much of that supports things like computers in the classroom? Those are my questions.
Righty, thank you so very much, Ms. Hamilton, and I'm going to ask the superintendent, if they can, before the board get into their board discussion, if we can get a few of these answered, I know that we can, on some of them.
Thanks.
All righty, and thank you so very much. Mr. Gunter, and followed by Mr. Hardy. And Mr. Gunter, will you please give us your name and your address, and we know you're speaking for yourself.
Good evening, and thanks for letting me have a couple of words here.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I'm a new resident to Orange County.
Oh, wow, welcome.
Relocated from up north, and I'm glad to see what's happening here, and I hope the schools do well.
Very good, thank you for that.
I'm in thought, basically with the school construction.
I'm sorry, your name, your address?
574 Sand Wedge Loop in Rock Springs, Regia, Popka.
So you're up there with Christine, so you got to get to know her. She has, look at that, you have an advocate, Christine, at the board already, and he's new to Orange County. And bring your northern information with you, thank you.
I'm very concerned about with the school construction and the electric bills. Florida is full of sunshine. Why don't we incorporate all the sunshine into the building and the maintenance of the schools? There's a lot of photovoltaic activity that can be done. Up north in New Jersey where I came from, the schools are all using solar panels in the parking lots, on the roofs, and everything, and they're bringing the cost of the schools' operating costs by almost 20% down from previous years. Why can't we do this in Florida? It's all the sunshine we have here. You have a lot of roofline, you have a lot of open space, you have built the parking lots, you can have solar panels on all of these things, and you don't have to pay the electric company these extraordinary amounts of money for these, for this, for which you have all the necessary sunlight here. The new technology has that you have battery-operated stuff that you can use overnight, you store it and use it overnight for all the light that you need. In the days, if you do something with the companies, you can sell it to whoever you want to, maybe some of the local companies, because they'd also be willing to do that. I would like to see the school board. I tried sending information about this two years ago. I couldn't do it in Apopka, they said to come to the school board, and that's why I'm here. I have pictures of panels on parking lots in the schools in New Jersey to show that I can show you. You could do the same thing here, and you could save us a lot of money, and be benefit to the society itself, too. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Gunter, that is, thank you for addressing this board, and I know that every board member is thinking, yes, we can do so-and-so, but I know that that is one question that Dr. Jenkins and her staff will address tonight for us. So if you can hang in there, we'll get to you, okay? Thank you so very much for your suggestion. Yes, Mr. Hardy, will you please give us your name, full name and address?
Chadwick Hardy, 2737 Sand Harbor Circle.
Okay, and you did not say what you were representing, but go ahead and represent. He didn't pick out.
Little me.
Okay.
I have to tell you, for the last three years, I've been coming and watching and learning, you've probably seen my face out for the last three years. And it's amazing to me, the number of hoops that a school district has to jump through for programs on the state level and the federal program. So, you know, kudos to y'all for that, because it's never easy. So, you know, kudos to y'all for that, because it's never easy. And the gentleman that just spoke, kudos to you. The ROI on solar is incredible, and in the summertime, the school district sells a lot back at that point, so kudos to you. I wasn't going to attend tonight, but I came and did a quick, high-level look at the budget, and a couple of things really, really jumped out at me. Number one, over the last, including this past three years going into this fourth year, we're looking at about a $39 million investment in portables. I find that disturbing, quite frankly, when you've got some schools that are struggling to make occupancy and others are over, they're just bursting at the seams. The $39 million in portable seems a bit out of line, quite frankly. We want to make sure that we're protecting schools that are in different districts. And I look at Jones and Ms. Gordon's, they struggle with their attendees, because a lot of the children and the students that are, quite frankly, zoned, that could walk somewhere, are bused to other schools. We've got to protect schools and put them, other schools, in a position where they don't have to use those portables. I also, probably over the last three years, one of the other things I've looked at is the number of district-level admins versus the school admins. This past school year, the number of district-level administrative staff has surpassed the school-level admins. And my request is just to please look at that. It just seems, again, it's one of those things that just looks like it doesn't make sense. It looks like, for some reason, why would we have more district-level administrators versus school-level administrators? You know, we put the money where the babies are. You know, I use that because, you know, I'm Hamp's dad now. You know, that's my name, I'm Hamp's dad. So I look at what's in the best interest for the children. And as I continue to look, things that jumped out like that made sense. I was quite frankly shocked to find out that out of the food service budget of the revenue, 105 million, well, 81 million comes from the federal government. So I can't imagine the hoops that we have to jump through there. Because after talking to a lot of the children in the county, you know, lunch is not their favorite time anymore, for many reasons. But I understand the loops that we have to jump through, again, the hoops we have to jump through to get the money to get that program done. So the other, I guess my last and final statement is, please, 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 the gentleman from the bargaining unit came up and mentioned the term managers. I don't expect managers from the district level. I don't expect managers from anything that has to do with elected officials. I expect leaders, okay? Pay the teachers what they're worth. Make sure that they're paid in a fair, timely manner, not like last year. Last year...
Mr. Hardy, you're going on another subject now.
All right.
I think the union covered it, and we appreciate you so very much. Thank you very much. I think what I would like to do, is it the pleasure of the board? Did you want to break at this time? Or do you want Dr. Jenkins to address these, and we can do it when we come back? Okay, what is the pleasure of the board, a five-minute, 10-minute break?
Let's break so that Barb can get some answers.
Okay, very good. Well, somebody, how many minutes would you like to, when would you like to return? Okay, within 10 minutes, we're going to ask that we be back in our seat. We will do this as quickly as we can, and give you a 10-minute break to go by 8:05. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. So we will convene, we're doing pretty good so far, but we want to make sure everybody gets covered tonight, because we still have a packed agenda. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, it is now 8:06. I'm asking all board members to please come to your seat. The superintendent is in hers, so we're ready to move. I'm so happy, let's roll it. We will reconvene our board meeting, and we're in the middle of discussion with the board discussion, but we will hold the board discussion until we hear from our superintendent in reference to some of the public comments. And we do have your cards with all of your questions on them. And I'm sure that the superintendent will let you know how we will be addressing some of your questions that we may not be able to get to tonight. Dr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me just cover a few items that, some of which may just be misunderstandings. I will start with some of the discussion that was at the very end of our public speakers. There are federal guidelines in place for our food and nutrition services. We run that particular department as an enterprise. It means they have to take in the dollars that they expend. They are not separately budgeted nor supplemented by our general fund. They are a separate enterprise. I think it's important also to note, should their revenues not make up for all of their needs or expenditures, then that's when we have to increase the cost of our lunches. There is no increase this year. But I want to say specifically, some of the federal guidelines, and this board has specifically taken on a challenge to have a healthy school system. We are a gold standard district for how we feed our children. We limit snacks, we limit unhealthy foods on our menu, and we increased fresh fruits and vegetables. Given that we have childhood obesity issues and increases in juvenile diabetes, we support, and this board has supported, the federal government's efforts to have healthy food and healthy diets for our young people. But enterprise, run by revenues that are incoming, otherwise we would have to increase the price of our lunches. And again, Healthy Food Initiative, Healthy Lunch Initiative is what this board has passed by policy. Secondly, there was a notion about district administrators surpassing school-level administrators. That gentleman was referring to something that is not in the budget. We will get him a personal response to that. It's not, he said it was not actually in the budget document, so we'll deal with that. Next, I wanted to say something regarding portables. We have significantly, over the last several years, decreased the number of portables that we have in the district. As a matter of fact, Chief Facilities Officer, Mr. Morris, made that a mandate under his supervision when he came in to be our chief facilities officer. And I don't know, John, if you have a number on hand for how many we have decreased for the number of portables at this point?
We've just about cut it in half. We had close to 5,000 portables owned and leased in the district, and we're down to around 2,600 now.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Morris. We have also looked previously at solar panels. It's a notion that we will continue to research. We've had more than one company approach us, saying they would front the money for the actual installations, and then have us pay them back over time for the actual installation out of savings. We've had that researched more than once. Staff will continue to look into solar panels. If you do it on your own, it is a significant capital investment initially, and then you recoup those dollars over several years. So we've been looking at some potentials where companies will actually cover the capital cost and then supposedly gain their money back over several years. So staff will continue to research that. I will tell you, we are not at a point where we can do our own capital investment to get it done, but the other option is still a possibility. Let me talk briefly about testing calendar, just so general public is aware. We are, dates are driven by state mandates, and then certainly because our teachers have significant penalties and raises and job opportunities tied to student outcomes, we will continue to progress monitor to help course-correct for our students, to help them with the end-of-year testing. Until state statute changes, as constitutional officers, we have to support that testing calendar. I will also mention, there was legislation around VPK investments. It's why you'll see some screening testing that takes place in kindergarten at the very beginning of school. It is what is mandated by the legislature because of dollars they've invested in VPK programs, or four-year-old programs, not just in the school system, but throughout the community with providers. When those children enter kindergarten, they are assessed during the first couple of weeks of school, because there's accountability for those VPK dollars that have gone out all over the community. If, for two consecutive years, your students come to kindergarten, they get screened, and they basically learn very little during that VPK year that the state paid for, then the possibility is that you will be shut down as a VPK provider. And so that is something that came directly from the legislature as well. Intended to have some accountability for millions of dollars that they are investing in four-year-old programs throughout the community. Our $229 million figure, if you will recall, was in our calculation, the mother of all charts, in our calculation for our sales tax projections. And that includes one-to-one devices for all of our students, one-to-one devices, and any additional infrastructure needed in schools, and any additional classroom setup that might be necessary as well. I will tell you, as we look to preparing our students for the 21st century, both for college and career, they have to have technology skills. And so our efforts, our goals are not around testing, they are around preparing our children for the world that they will live in as digital natives, so they need to be prepared for that. That being said, the state did have a mandate. We are upon that cutoff date for having 50% of your instructional materials dollars being invested toward digital curriculum. I will tell you again, we certainly invest more than $15 million a year for 187,000 children. But if we were trying to go buy the book, half of the $15 million or so dollars that we get would have to be spent toward digital. And it's our goal to exceed that, because we don't need to keep replicating paper products when it's not the world that our children will live in. And so we will be in compliance with the 50% requirement. Next, I wanted to address impact of charter schools. We really can't, that's part of the frustration in our budgeting process, is that we can't always accurately predict how many students will be in charter schools. Currently, we're at about 11,000, costing us about $80 million for charter schools. Can't tell you if a large percentage of those children will return to us for the start of school, or if additional students may elect to go to charter schools. We support parents' rights to choose, we just want to have some quality assurance for the choices that are available to them. But our parents, when they make those choices, sometimes it makes our budgeting a bit flexible, because we can't always accurately predict how many will be in charter school attendance. The $4.6 million for technology for this coming year, if you recall, we had a digital pilot, because as we prepared to go full-scale, we wanted to make sure we gathered enough intelligence to make that move more efficiently and certainly more well-informed for the investment of our dollars on platforms, on actual devices, and on digital curriculum as well. And so for the coming year, we're not expanding our pilot, which, by the way, I believe you had it in your last board update. New initiatives, initially, you will predict, there is a prediction in most models that you will see some slight decreases, and then you will see increases. And so we made the board aware of that, if you will recall. But the $4.6 million is really helping our teachers with additional professional development, giving us some additional infrastructure and some central support before we're able to go to 186 schools, as opposed to the seven schools that were in the pilot. Next, let me say something briefly about, classroom, let me say something about instructional line items this year versus last year, that really does get toward, move directly toward collective bargaining. And so those are the kinds of things that are dealt with at the bargaining table. I would not go any further into that matter as well. And then there was one question on percent of total curriculum. I can't, I'm not able to tell you the percent of our total curriculum. That's an item that Mr. Collins would actually call back, that particular individual that asked that question. And I want to be clear, too, the state is moving toward computerized testing. We cannot afford, it's a disadvantage, it's unfair to our children not to let them have access to using the technology regularly, when you know that's how they're going to be assessed. Now, if we get some changes in how they're going to be assessed from Tallahassee, then certainly we will comply. But at this point, when we know they are going to be assessed with technology, computerized testing, then we have to have our children familiarized with that on a regular basis. It really doesn't attend much to the budget, but I wanted to make that comment as well. So many of our children have a technology in their homes. For young people that do not have the technology in their home, that are not regularly accessing a computer, we have got to get them exposure and familiarity with that technology, certainly before they have a test that has such high stakes on their future. Again, that is not by our design, that is certainly by state design. And so we're going to continue to make our children prepared, not just for testing, but prepared for the 21st century, for college and career. Mr. Collins, if there's anything I've neglected you want to add, Madam Chair?
Madam Superintendent, we thank you so very much. We didn't know you were going to answer them all, almost. And I know there are a couple that left up, and I know some are negotiable, there are bargaining issues, everything. We are collaborative bargaining, so so many things can be brought to the table. And if I did not get answer, I'm sure that you can, when you meet with the superintendent, generally the board, the CTA president and the superintendent generally meets. And then I know you meet with Mr. Collins, and then you also, can't meet with Ms. Cadel right now, and myself, but you will be meeting. But we will address all of those issues for you. I thank you at this time. Board members, I would like to say to you, most of us have had an opportunity to meet in the budget session and work sessions with Mr. Collins. And unless there is something very pressing to you at this time, I would probably like to ask, is the pleasure of you at this particular time, would you like to put the motion on the floor for the adoption of the 2014-15 tentative budget? Or do you want to do your board discussion?
I'm happy to move it, if it's the pleasure of the board.
Okay, Ms. Flynn, and Ms. Moore, and Mr. Roach, are you in favor of us going ahead and putting the motion to the floor as it relates? Okay, all right, then it is, Ms. Cadel moved?
I move.
Okay.
I move that, number one, we approve the 2014-15 tentative budget for the general fund in the amount of $1,853,268,832. Number two, approve the 2014-15 tentative budget for the special revenue fund, $131,276,219. Number three, approve the 2014-15 tentative budget for debt service fund at $209,648,081. Number four, approve the tentative, approve the 2014-15 tentative budget for the capital Number five, approve the 2014-15 tentative budget for the internal service fund, $273,279,040. Six, approve the date for the final public hearing for the fiscal year 1415 budget for 5:30 PM on September 9, 2014, at the Ronald Blocker Educational Leadership Center, 445 West Amelia Street, Orlando, Florida.
Ms. Cadel, again, I say, as your chair, I really enjoy hearing you read that into the records. It just sounds so good and official. So you heard that it's been moved by board member Cadel, the motion, and it was seconded by Pam Gull, and, believe it or not, Ms. Robinson. And hearing that, all those in favor of adopting the recommended resolution, will you signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And opposes, nay? You have it. Madam Superintendent, this board has given to you and your staff, and I like what Mr. Collins said, I wrote it down, this budget, these are the dollars that we know about. So I love that statement. So, Madam Superintendent, you have your proposed budget and the date of the next public hearing. And thank you so very much. And it was, the motion was carried 7-0. Thank you so very much. At this particular time, the consent agenda, if there are any comments coming from the board, or anything on the consent agenda, if there are no comments, I'm going to ask for the approval of the consent agenda.
Move the approval of the consent agenda.
Moved by Ms. Cadel, seconded by Ms. Moore, Ms. Flynn, and Ms. Robinson. All right. All those in favor, may I hear you say aye?
Aye.
And opposes, nay? Again, Madam Superintendent, your consent agenda has been approved. At this particular time, we are going to move and expedite. We thank your staff for waiting so patiently tonight, and you cannot go home. Okay, go home, go home. Okay, we thank you for the approval of the consent agenda, and those who have copies, you can see so many things at the superintendent's office. you can see so many things that the superintendent has brought to this board that has been approved. We're moving to item 16, which is our non-consent, an emergency item, we will take up 16.01, request approval of resolution ordering and providing for the holding of a referendum election to determine if the electors of the school district of Orange County, Florida, authorize the school board to extend the annual levy, one mil, four years for operating expenses. Are there any discussion on this matter? Okay, hearing none coming before the board? All of those in favor, aye? Those opposed, nay? The board, Madam Superintendent, has voted for you, the request of the approval of the resolution for 16.01, and it is 7-0. And the next item we will take up at this particular time is 16.02, it's an exception hearing with the Catapult Learning LLC versus Orange County School Board, and Ombudsman, I hope I got that correct, Ombudsman Educational Service LTD. At this particular time, I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent, okay, Madam Superintendent, or should it be the general counsel? Let me, will you also point out that Imana Aria, Aria, thank you, is our court reporter, and not for the school board, but she's the court reporter, so I do want the record to reflect that she's taking note. So at this particular time, Mr. Willie Rodriguez, I believe I turn it over to you to provide the board with an overview on the procedures for this hearing. Board members, you have been given your booklet that you should have gone over with the general counsel, and if you have any questions, you can still address them to him. Mr. Rodriguez, our general counsel, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I think, just as a housekeeping, did you get the, can we get, who got the motion in the second on item 1601 for the court?
Thank you. All those in favor?
Well, we need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ask for a motion.
Oh, thank you. The pleasure of this vote is it has been moved by, I'm going so fast, I love you guys, thank you so much, Ms. Gole. It's been moved by Ms. Gole that we accept the 16.01, seconded by, seconded by Ms. Flynn.
No.
Now, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Okay, the ayes have it, and so let it be. It is passed 7-0. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon.
Yes, Ms. Moore wants to speak before the general counsel?
I just really wanted to recognize Ms. Frankie Elliott, and I know Mrs. Cato went out there because that just went so fast, and she had volunteered so nicely to come down and leave her. Was she second grade this year? Third, Joseph? Third grader to come all the way down here in case we had any questions for her, and we flew by it so fast without, you know, a motion and a second. I just want to say thank you for being here, and apparently, we didn't need any extra help tonight.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Moore, thank you, all right.
And actually, I think Joseph's going into fourth grade next year, because he took third grade FCAT.
Wow. Well, we don't have that anymore, thank goodness. All right, thank you so very much, and thank you, board, for bringing that to my attention on the last motion. General Counsel Willie Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. A couple of things before we get started. I know that in the last few years, we have tried our best to try and educate the board on the exceptions process. I know it doesn't occur with much regularity, but you may recall, I think about a year or so ago, a year and a half ago, we gave you sort of a presentation on the different quasi-judicial roles of the school board. There was a big chart we had you all sort of carry. I'm just going to give you some of the highlights because this is an exceptions hearing. It's an exceptions hearing because it arises from the fact that there was some proceeding beforehand. In this case, there was a bid protest, and it took place before an administrative hearing officer. It is before you to decide essentially whether or not that recommended order that's before you today should be adopted or not, and you're going to hear from the parties in just a few minutes. During this process, of course, the superintendent is represented by outside counsel, I believe she's represented by Kimberly Dowd with the law firm of Broad and Cassell, as well as Amy Enval in our office, who has shepherded the superintendent's charge throughout this process. I serve as your attorney during these proceedings to guide you in any questions about procedures and so forth. I do not represent the superintendent or her staff in these particular proceedings. And then the question that always comes up is what evidence can be considered or presented in these types of quasi-judicial hearings? You're not charged with the responsibility of making judgment calls and trying to second-guess what the administrative hearing officer thought or did not think. What your charge is, is to find the responsibility of reviewing and weighing the evidence from the entire record and making your determination. But new evidence should not be considered or presented at tonight's proceeding. Typically, at these hearings, there were some speaker cards that were presented. I spoke to the attorney for Catapult. The attorneys certainly are here to represent their clients, the clients can also appear and present comments before you, but we usually don't have public comments in these quasi-judicial hearings because the purpose is to sort of figure out whether or not the lower tribunal, the administrative hearing officer's decision, is something you're going to end up upholding. In order to help simplify and assist you in this process this evening as well, we did circulate the three considerable options that you will probably have this evening. Those three options include whether you're going to approve the recommended hearing officer's decision, secondly, whether you're going to make changes to the recommended hearing officer's decision, or whether you're going to remand it in the case that you find that there was some fault, and the request that the hearing officer take further testimony for further consideration. With that, the only other comment I would like to make regarding the procedure this evening is, you did receive, there is a statute which addresses the issue of ex-party communications and ex-party materials. The parties were given an opportunity to respond, there was a, an exception hearing. Catapult submitted documents that stated what their exceptions are, that's identified in your notebooks under tab two and highlighted with those areas that are pertinent. Under tab three is the response from the superintendent's counsel, and in addition to that, however, there were a couple of documents, some letters and correspondence. Those are typically considered ex-party communications because it's important that we put this on the record. Those documents were delivered to all members of the board. I also, as a courtesy, had a conference call with all of the attorneys on Thursday afternoon and extended that same opportunity. One of the concerns when you allow additional information or ex-party communications into a proceeding is that you run the risk of favoring one side or another, so one of the ways to possibly cure that is to provide equal opportunities to both sides. As a result of that, the superintendent's counsel did provide their own correspondence. We received that late yesterday afternoon, and then that was circulated in the early hours this morning, so you should have received that as well. That is not to say that you should only consider those additional correspondences. I would certainly ask you to listen carefully to the proceedings. And at this point, Madam Chair, I'm going to turn it back over to you unless there's other questions.
All righty, thank you so very much. And you did, I know you talked about a couple other things, but you did stress the importance that the records, and I could address that at this particular time. Okay, because this is very important, what our general counsel is saying to us. Board members, if you would please note that because the board is acting in a quasi-judicial manner this evening, any correspondence or conversation on this particular matter, other than that that we've had with our general counsel, should now be disclosed for the record. So I need to ask each board member, are there any board members that need to disclose that they have met with either of the parties, either sitting out there on a telephone or whatever, or have you received any correspondence other than that, that the general counsel has given to you and that he referenced? So no one needs, you have not done so. Hearing that?
I need a point of clarification. Because we all received something from Catapult, and you're saying that we've all received that, but is there anything else that any of us have received other than the two mailings we got?
And this is just as a, I do not expect, I've had conversations with each of you about the process and the procedure, but in an abundance of caution, just want the record to reflect, and that's why I had the Madam Chair ask the question to make sure it's on the record. If you have had separate conversations with any of the participants, whether it's Ombudsman, Catapult, or anyone else with regards to this process, now's the time to disclose. It doesn't mean that you're going to be discredited or can't participate in these proceedings, it just needs to be on the record, since particularly, we have a court reporter present. And if there is no such disclosures, then I think we can proceed, Madam Chair.
All right, and I'm hearing that there are none, other than what we've each received as a board, and we all have been advised by our general counsel. Now, we will proceed with the exception hearing, and so all of this is new to some of us, and some of you actually know. We know that both sides have been advised that they will be provided 20 minutes to present their arguments. Attorney Paul Thig, I believe you are representing Catapult, okay? And we'll be going first, so you could come forward, and I'm just going to read a little bit of directions to the board so that we will be on task, and each of us will know what direction we're going in. I believe that you are representing Catapult and will be going first. We will ask you to reserve any of your 20 minutes for rebuttal. So if you want to do that, you can set aside a couple of minutes or whatever, so you can announce if you want to do so. You have 20 minutes. Are you going to consider to set aside any of those minutes?
Madam Vice Chair, I would like to reserve whatever portion of time I do not use in my initial address.
Okay, and with that in mind, I'll ask Mr. Rodriguez to keep the timing on us with that, and that is granted to you, and I'm sure that the board is in favor. Okay, at this time, I'm going to call Attorney Kimberly Dowd, and I hope that I have that correct, and there she is. She will be representing our superintendent in this case, but before we begin, Attorney Dow, I will address you with the same questions. Are there any time that you would like to set aside?
Yes, Madam Chair, woman, I'd like to set aside five minutes of my time for Ombudsman to address the board.
And that will be granted to you. So Attorney Dow stated that she would need that five minutes to address the board, and that will be granted to you. Now, after the superintendent's presentation, I believe that we also have, the person that will be doing the five minutes will be Mr. Charles Huddleston, Attorney Charles Huddleston. Very good, very good. So, and then Attorney Thig, you will also have your rebuttal time with the remaining of time that is set aside, and our general counsel, along with Ms. McGill, will keep that time for you. Is that okay?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you so very much. So you may begin.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Members of the board, Mr. General Counsel, the Superintendent. I'm here tonight on behalf of Catapult Learning, who is both a protester in this bid process and a longtime partner with this district in Title I non-public services. This is this board's first opportunity to address the issues raised in this protest. We want to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present its, Catapult's position. The biggest issue before you is actually quite simple. We had a trial before an administrative law judge, whose task was to decide the issues that Catapult Learning raised in its bid protest. After that trial, the judge issued a recommended order that ruled in favor of the district. That recommended order, however, does not even mention the main issue raised by Catapult in its bid protest. Not a word. I'm going to read you a portion of my opening statement to the ALJ during our hearing so that you can fully understand the issue. The crux of the dispute between Catapult and the district involves the application of a concept known as responsiveness. The way I think of responsiveness is a proposal submitted in response to an RFP is responsive if it provides the information and documents required by the RFP. In this RFP, the district did an outstanding job of clearly indicating all the information that the document required as a part of a proposal for the proposal to be responsive. If you take a look at section 30B23, I'll read you exactly what it says. SBOC has established certain requirements with respect to proposals to be submitted by prospective respondents. The use of shall, must, or will, except to indicate simple futurity in the RFP, indicates a requirement or condition which must be met. The evidence will show that Ombudsman's proposal deviated from the requirements of the RFP in two ways. It did not provide the information required on revised Appendix A, which is located on F12, and it did not provide the information required on Appendix G, which is at B33 through 34. The evidence will show that the deviations on Ombudsman's proposal are also material. This is the outline of a claim that Ombudsman's proposal was not responsive to the RFP. It did not provide the information and documents requested by the district. Now, if you could turn to the recommended award, responsiveness is only mentioned in one paragraph. Paragraph 10, the last two sentences, which I'll read for you. Ms. Nito, the school board's procurement representative, affirmed the school board's position that when a proposal is non-responsive, it is not scored. Here, all six proposals were scored. The issue, the biggest issue before the ALJ was whether Ombudsman's proposal was non-responsive. The single mention of non-responsive in the recommended order is a finding of fact regarding when the district made a determination of responsiveness. The hearing before the ALJ is a de novo proceeding. In other words, the ALJ makes the decision, not relies on what this district did. The finding in paragraph 10 does not make any such finding of fact. It doesn't address the issue of responsiveness in any way. This is the primary issue in Catapult's protest. Counsel for the superintendent is an excellent attorney. She knows that the recommended order is defective because it does not dispose of the primary issue in this case. As an excellent attorney, she completely ignores that fact in making a finding that the ALJ does not make a finding that Ombudsman was either responsive or non-responsive, and directs your attention to paragraph 10, which we've already addressed, and paragraph 23. These paragraphs do not address the issue. Now, let's go back to the standard for responsiveness, which is in paragraph 30. And if you could, if I could direct your attention to the letter I sent to you on July 24th. Attached to that letter is a, is the revised proposal price sheet submitted by Ombudsman. Revised Appendix A states, respondent shall bid a percentage of FTE that will cover all costs to administer this program as further specified in the RFP. Now, as you can see in Catapult, in Ombudsman's revised Appendix A, they did not bid a percentage of FTE, they did not bid a single rate, they did not bid prices for all three contract years, they did not bid a single rate for all facilities. In short, they did not bid in a single format that would allow the district to make an The standard for responsiveness in the RFP is set forth in paragraph 30. I previously read to you the line that has to do with shall, must, or will, I'll read it for you again. The use of shall, must, or will, except to indicate simple futurity... "The use of shall, must, or will, except to indicate simple futurity in the RFP, indicates a requirement or condition which must be met. SBOC may, at its sole discretion, waive these requirements or conditions if the conditions are determined to be not material. A deviation from a requirement is material if the deficient response is not in substantial accord with the RFP requirements, provides an advantage to one respondent over other respondents, or has a potentially significant effect on the delivery, quantity, or quality of items proposed, amount paid to the respondent, or for the cost to SBOC. Material deviations cannot be waived by this board." Now, we can go back and forth about whether a deviation was material. A review of this record will indicate that the procurement officer, Mernelli-Nito, made a conclusory determination that the proposal was responsive, and that was it. She did not go through these material requirements in the RFP and see if they applied. And I can tell you right now, just by how the district acted, that they were material. Because what happened was, the way they submitted their proposal price prevented the district from making an apples-to-apples comparison of prices. So what happened is, they scored everybody zero. You will see a cost analysis listed next, listed, I'm sorry, attached to Mr. Udell's letter. That cost analysis shows that the difference in one year alone between our two price proposals is $1.2 million to this district, and yet we each received the same score of zero. That means that this price proposal format is a material requirement of this RFP and had to be complied with, and this district could not waive it. And the fact that there is no finding in this recommended order regarding proposal price and responsiveness makes it deficient. Now, it occurred to me, as I stood here tonight, watching this meeting, that you all have a lot of very complicated decisions to make. You have a huge budget. You have teacher pay issues, all sorts of things that are very important. You having an extremely voluminous record in this bid protest to go through to fully understand it. Given everything that we've done here tonight, it's hard for me to understand why you wouldn't go through that process, instead of just relying on counsel. So considering that, I'd like to bring up Stuart Udell, excuse me, who's the CEO of Catapult Learning, to explain to you why you should crack open the record and thoroughly review how deficient this recommended order is. Stuart?
Madam Chairman, Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Stuart Udell. I'm the CEO of Catapult Learning. I also serve as the immediate past chairman and current board member of the National Dropout Prevention Center at Clemson University, and have been long involved in this type of work. Just as a little bit of quick background, this past January, Catapult acquired the assets, some of the assets of a company called Alternatives Unlimited, that ran certain dropout recovery centers in your district under the name of Drop Back In. We are not Alternatives Unlimited or DBI. We just bought those assets. But what we are really is the white knight. As some of you may know, Alternatives Unlimited was in receivership. We were the only organization that raised our hand and said we were willing to teach out the school year. It was a money-losing proposition. And on top of it, as I promised Dr. Bernier in my first meeting with him, we did the right thing by investing more money into these centers over the last six months, about $320,000 in facilities, upgrades, technology, and furniture and such, because it was the right thing to do for kids who were trying to graduate. And we've talked about that a little bit here tonight. And the results showed that we were successful. We had a 43% increase in the number of graduates that our predecessors did, up from 70 to 100. And there were incredibly, you know, inspiring success stories, including one student who started with us in a homeless shelter, graduated with us while still living in a homeless shelter, and is now finishing his first session, summer session, at FAMU with As and Bs going into his finals. As Paul mentioned, Catapult has also invested in other ways in Orange County. We have been your Title I non-public service provider for 29 years in a row. I don't believe that happens by accident. It's because we've delivered good service and great results. We currently serve 1,800 students in this district and 10,000 in Florida, while, to my knowledge, Ombudsman serves no students in the state of Florida currently. We currently employ 371 educators in Florida, including about 50 in Orange County, whose jobs are obviously in jeopardy, depending on the outcome of this decision. Now, while my entire career has been in education, I also run the business of Catapult Learning and Catapult Academies, so sometimes, like you, I also have to make bottom-line decisions. And as was indicated by our counsel, this decision is tantamount to throwing $1.25 million out the door. And while we have a $1.85 billion budget, $1.25 million is still quite substantial. It could fund the guidance counselor increases. It could fund the bilingual program adjustment we talked about, that was talked about tonight. So that is quite significant. And of course, the cost to the district goes up as more students potentially enroll in this alternative proposal via Ombudsman, because Catapult's pricing structure, which followed the format, comes in at less than your FTE. So for every new student who comes in, who comes back to school, which is all of our goals, you make money. For every student who comes in with Ombudsman, you end up losing money. We think that's bad for kids and bad for the district. We certainly regret having to protest. It's not a comfortable situation for us, but we felt it was the right thing to do because of the fundamental flaws that Paul indicated in the process. As you may have noticed in the letter from me, we have suggested a resolution or a compromise. We certainly believe we are the better provider of services here, but in the interest of getting kids back into school on time, we have suggested that you consider awarding the contract for the eight district co-located programs, so certain academies are co-located in your sites, that you consider awarding that to Ombudsman, those eight sites, that you consider awarding the five non-district sites, so we have on our own built out facilities in the communities, because we know with dropouts, it's important to bring education to them. We're trying to give them options to stay in school. It's impractical that any new vendor could get five or six new centers going in the communities in this short amount of time, so we'd like you to consider awarding that to us. And we have also suggested that we'd be willing to pay half of the district's legal fees that you have accrued throughout this process as a good-faith gesture, should we come to that type of resolution. We hope that you consider this offer of continued partnership, as we think it's in the best interest for the district, and for kids, and for all parties involved. Thank you for your time.
Our general counsel, just for clarification, we're assuming that the four minutes and 13 seconds will be used for rebuttal. All righty, thank you so very much. Attorney Dowd, thank you so very much. You have 15 minutes, and you set aside five for Attorney Charles Huddleston.
Yes, thank you.
Very good. Thank you so very much. You may begin.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chairman Gordon, the school board members, staff that's still here. I represent Superintendent Jenkins in this matter, and the procurement staff of Orange County Public Schools. We are here on Catapult's bid protest regarding the RFP for the provider of services to operate its secondary education dropout prevention program. We are not here today to hear and evaluate new facts that were not in evidence before the administrative law judge. We are not here today to evaluate the new facts that were part of the comments that were by Mr. Udell, and we're not here to evaluate potential settlement proposals. We're here focused on the exceptions that were made by Catapult to the ALJ's recommended order, and we need to refocus ourselves on those exceptions. In January of 2014, the school board issued the RFP for those services. The deadline to file a challenge to the RFP specifications was within 72 hours of the posting of those specifications. Catapult did not challenge the RFP specifications. Six entities submitted proposals to the RFP. The RFP was, provided the proposal evaluation committee with a two-step process for evaluating the proposals. A shortlisting phase, where they evaluated four criteria, and a second, final presentation of the proposals, which evaluated three additional criteria. In the shortlist phase, price was only one of four criteria, and pricing represented 20% of the score. Prior to the explanation of step two of the selection process, the RFP explicitly provided, "Failure to file a protest within the time prescribed by Section 120.573 of the Florida statutes shall constitute a waiver of proceedings under Chapter 120. Once the allowed time period has passed, this phase of the process will be completed." Nelly-Nito served as the procurement representative for the school board. She oversaw the entire RFP process. She determined that all six proposals were responsive to the RFP, and that all six respondents were responsible entities. Otherwise, they would never have been scored. She testified to this in front of the ALJ. On March 6th, the PEC met in an advertised public meeting and reviewed, evaluated, and scored all six proposals. They posted the shortlist evaluation ranking, and Catapult, Ombudsman were tied for first, and Atlantic was the third entity on the shortlist. Catapult did not protest the shortlist ranking. On March 13th, the PEC met again for step two of the process. They evaluated entirely different criteria. Proposal price and MWBE-LDB participation were not evaluated, and the scores from step one, when price was considered and scored, did not carry over to step two. The school board posted the presentation ranking on March 17th, and named Ombudsman as the top bidder. For the first time, Catapult filed its notice of intent to protest. On May 14th, we had an evidentiary hearing. It was a full-blown evidentiary hearing. The ALJ considered all evidence. All parties agreed to entry of all of the exhibits. Nothing was left out. The ALJ heard testimony from all of the witnesses, who were under oath and were able to be cross-examined. The ALJ considered everything, and has categorically rejected Catapult's position. On June 5th, the ALJ issued a recommended order in favor of the school board's actions. The ALJ recommended that the school board enter a final order, finding that the presentation ranking that found Ombudsman to be the highest-ranking bidder was not contrary to the school board's governing statutes, or the school board's policies or rules, nor was it clearly erroneous, arbitrary, capricious, or contrary to competition. Catapult served its exceptions, and actually set forth seven exceptions to the recommended order. I was anticipating that Mr. Figg was going to argue those exceptions tonight, but he only argued the first exception. I will go through each of the seven, so you understand our position. The standard of review for you is set forth in Statutes 120.57. It establishes the applicable standard. It limits your authority to modify or reject the ALJ's findings. With respect to conclusions of law, in order to reject or modify the findings, you must make a finding that your substituted conclusion of law, or interpretation of administrative rule, is as or more reasonable than the ALJ's. Florida law significantly curtails your ability to reject or modify findings of fact. You must first determine from a review of the entire record, and state with particularity in your final order, "The findings of fact were not based upon competent substantial evidence, or that the proceedings in which the findings were based did not comply with essential requirements of law." If a finding is supported by any competent evidence in the record, the finding cannot be disturbed. You cannot re-way the evidence. You cannot judge the credibility of the witnesses. You cannot resolve conflicts in the evidence, or otherwise interpret the evidence anew. So the first exception that Catapult had was these responsive requirements. As he said, I'm going to point out to you paragraph 10 and paragraph 23 of the recommended order, in which the ALJ finds that the school board does not score non-responsive proposals. Here, all the proposals were scored, and in the case of price, awarded zero points. The record contained competent substantial evidence that all proposals were responsive. We've provided you the specific transcript sites in our response. The school board should reject exception one. Exception two is with respect to insufficient findings regarding price proposal. Catapult's exception again appears to ignore paragraphs 10 and 23 of the recommended order, in which the ALJ finds that non-responsive proposals are not scored. Pricing was scored zero. Catapult simply points to testimony and evidence in the record that may lead you to a different finding, and arguably asks you to re-way the evidence presented to the ALJ. This is not the standard. The issue is not whether the record contains evidence that would also support a different factual finding, but whether the findings of fact are supported by any competent substantial Catapult argues that the record only contains evidence that Ombudsman's alleged price proposal deviations were material, but concedes that Ms. Nito testified that those deviations were not material. It's simply inappropriate to debate the issue. Competent substantial evidence in the record supports the ALJ's findings, and those citations are in the response. With respect to the proposals receiving a score of zero with respect to price, this is not the first time that the procurement staff has awarded a score of zero on an RFP. As the ALJ addressed the pricing issue in the recommended order, and because there is competent substantial record evidence existing to support those findings, you should reject exception two. Exception three deals with the MWBE-LDB requirements. There's competent substantial record evidence supporting a finding that Ombudsman's proposal is to MWBE was responsive to the RFP, and those citations are in the response. Exception four takes issue with paragraph nine of the recommended order. Again, Catapult argues that competent substantial evidence does not support this finding because there's additional testimony in the record. Again, they're simply pointing you to other testimony that might lead you to another result. The issue's not whether the record contains evidence that would also support a different finding, but whether findings of fact are supported by any competent substantial evidence. Those citations are in the response. They're in the record. With respect to exception five, they, Catapult attacks the final sentence of paragraph 10, where the ALJ provides that all six proposals were scored. Again, there's competent substantial evidence in the record supporting the ALJ's finding. Exception six addresses a conclusion of law. They argue that the conclusion of law is incorrect because price should be scored objectively, and although their price was lower, they received the same score. Catapult does not cite to any record evidence that the evaluation of the proposals was irrational or unsupported by facts and logic. Instead, Ms. Nito evaluated the proposal price of each proposal, determined that it was responsive, including Ombudsman's, and recommended the proposal prices receive a score of zero. They were scored with zero. That evidence is in the record.
Right. And Attorney Dowd, did you want to yield the rest of the time?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Did you have, okay.
Madam Chair, I had 15 minutes for her, not 20.
Oh, you didn't put 20 up there, because she was rushing, and I see Attorney Huddleston say, hurry up, hurry up. Thank you. So you didn't set it at 20, you said, "Thank you."
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because I know you were rushing, and I saw Attorney Huddleston say, "Oh, my God, my time is..." God, my time is gone." And then I do want Attorney Figs to know, once Attorney Huddleston makes his final statement there, then Attorney Figs, you are up for rebuttal time. Okay?
Okay. The last exception that Catapult addresses is that the administrative law judge did not make a complete adjudication of Catapult's protest. It's simply not true. The statement of the issue is set forth in the recommended order. It says, "The issue in this case, a bid protest, is whether respondent Orange County School Board acted contrary to its governing statutes, rules, or policies when it awarded the Alternative Education Dropout Prevention Services request for proposal #1401017 to Ombudsman Educational Services LTD instead of Catapult Learning LLC." Catapult did not take exception to the statement of issue in the recommended order. The recommended order and the recommendation in the recommended order adjudicates this issue. Exception 7 should be rejected. For the foregoing reasons, the school board should reject Catapult's exceptions and adopt the ALJ's recommended order. There's one issue that I'd like to talk about, the ex parte communications. Under Florida Statute 120.66, no party or its attorney shall communicate with an agency head concerning merits of the case without copying the other parties. Ombudsman and I were not copied on the letters that were sent to you by Catapult and their attorney. This also violates the RFP's Code of Silence, which is found in Section 3, Paragraph 4, on Page 10 of the RFP. That Code of Silence provides that the school board members are not to be contacted prior to contract award. The contract has not been awarded. You should not have been contacted. The school board has discretion to disqualify Catapult for failing to comply with this provision. At the very least, the school board should disregard the letter as well as Ombudsman-Catapult cost comparison. That cost comparison was not part of evidence considered by the ALJ. It was not subject to rebuttal. The witnesses did not testify about it, and were not subject to cross-examination. It's wholly speculative. It is too late to add new facts now. Thank you for your consideration. We have proposed final order language if you wish to see it, and then I am giving my time to Charles. Thank you.
Okay. So will you be able to add two more minutes on to Mr. Huddleston, and that would give you at least seven minutes, Mr. Huddleston? General Counsel, would that be in order? Thank you. You're on, Mr. Huddleston. God bless you.
Good evening, all you folks up front. It's been a long evening. We appreciate the chance to be heard.
Thank you for waiting.
I do have someone here from Ombudsman who wants to take about a minute and a half, two minutes of my time, since I had more than I thought, to explain how excited we are to have this opportunity, and that we're ready to go. Mr. Rudy Flores, he's a former school superintendent in Arizona, is here. Mr. Flores.
Should they give their names for the record also? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Vice Chair, Superintendent Jakenz, members of the board, I'm Rudy Flores, Senior Vice President, Operations for Ombudsman Educational Services. We are very excited and have been excited since January, since we won this award, and we have been preparing since that time to take on the award and fully give it its due. We have prepared both staff and services related to technology and other items in preparation of receiving this award. We in fact have staff in Florida, and we have prepared a number of contracts that would be related to our services, and they are just ready for award. So we look forward to hearing a positive decision in our favor, and wanted just to reassure to you that we are prepared and ready to take a full award of this contract and move forward with it. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you for addressing. Okay, Mr. Huddleston, you're back up.
I had a few additional points to make. I think Ms. Dowd covered pretty much the groundwork. Sitting as an appellate body, as you argue, you're limited to the record below, and so we and the superintendent protest both the ex parte communications and the attempt to put a new piece of evidence before you. So even though they argued about it here tonight, I do not think you can consider that. There was no witness that testified about that at the full-day hearing. That exhibit was not submitted before the parties and the judge. And we had a chance to present all of our arguments, cross-examine other parties' witnesses, before a professional, qualified, independent, state-appointed administrative law judge. And she found in favor of the district's decision to award the contract to our client. It is important to note that, as he did here tonight, Mr. Fig made his number-one argument all day long was that Ombudsman's proposal was not responsive. To even think that the ALJ did not rule on that, you would have to think she was asleep at the wheel. The findings that Ms. Dowd referred to in Paragraph 10 and Paragraph 23 show that she agreed with the testimony of the chief procurement officer in charge of this particular procurement that's been the practice of the school district for years, that they make a preliminary determination in the procurement department about whether a bidder, a proposal, is responsive and responsible. And if it is, they pass it on to the evaluation committee. If it's not, they rule it in response, not responsive and not responsible then, and they don't bother time of professionals from the school district to evaluate it if it's not responsive. So that finding was made, and the argument today that the judge didn't make that finding is contrary to the record and the recommended order of the ALJ. Secondly, the RFP itself made it clear, and I've litigated procurement issues all around the country, the RFP made it clear, like most public agencies do, that they reserve, that the school district reserves the right to negotiate price. Now, if you're doing, if you're buying copiers or paper, you could do an invitation to bid. You spec out the kind of copiers you want, and the kind of maintenance you want, or the size of paper you want, and the thickness of it, and you just go get the best deal you can get for price. When you're talking about highly qualified, experienced services from professionals to deal with children who are dropping out and not coming to school, and then trying to retain them or to get them in your facility, that's where you want to focus on more than just price. Because to some degree, you always get what you pay for when you're dealing with professional services. So that's the reason there was a 20% allocated to price, 80% dealt with other things. The district scored us equal on the price, but guess what? The district wisely reserved the right to negotiate price at the end with whoever they thought was the best potential provider, and so they still have that right to negotiate with Ombudsman as we get, move forward with this deal. And that means that if, in the end, we can't come to an agreement that the board is satisfied with, or my client's satisfied with, the board can go to the next proposer. So there was no protest made at the time the RFP went out, that the school board shouldn't reserve the right to negotiate price. So that is an element as to which the protester, the bid protest, cannot really challenge at this point and say, "Oh, well, you know what their price is because it was here." We don't, no one knows what the price is. That's called speculation. Until the two parties get in the room and do some hard negotiating, there's no way anyone in this room knows what the price will be that the parties could end up at. And then finally, I would say that this is obviously an important decision to the district. You turned it over to some very qualified folks who testified all day, including Ms. Nito. They made great witnesses for the school district, and the independent state judge who listened to all the testimony and listened to Mr. Fig's argument and listened to his witnesses, decided the district procurement process met the standards of law as set forth by Florida law, and the decision was based on sufficient facts. And unless you're willing to say she was not following the law, or unless, and you really can't go in and change the factual record, that's the record you've got to deal with, you really have no other obligation other than to affirm the ALJ's finding and her recommended order, which are based on a full day of evidence cross-examination, and her judgment as a professional, independent, state-appointed administrative judge. So we hope that's what the board will do tonight in its quasi-judiciary capacity, and affirm and adopt the recommended order. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Huddleston. I really appreciate that. At this particular time, Mr. Figs, if you would come forward for the rebuttal, and I'm going to ask General Counsel to give you the exact time, and it should be 14. You did 13 tonight. Good. He's going to give you 15. Two more seconds, he did add. That makes a big difference. Okay. So we're going to ask you if you would do your rebuttal for us at this time. Thank you so very much, Mr. Figs.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry, Madam Vice Chair. Three points in rebuttal. This is a 20-minute proceeding. If I were to go through all of the exceptions and the entire record, it would be as long a proceeding as we had before the ALJ. The fact is, this is a de novo proceeding. It does not matter what Ms. Nito concluded. It matters what the ALJ concludes with respect to responsiveness. She has made no conclusion. She has made no finding of fact. Secondly, Ms. Dowd pointed to the recommendation that I cited as an exception, which states, "Based on the foregoing findings of fact and conclusions of law, it is recommended that a final order be entered, finding that the presentation ranking that found Ombudsman to be the highest-ranked bidder was not contrary to the school board's governing statutes or the school board's policies or rules." That is not the standard to be applied by this board. It also has to be found that is not contrary to the RFP specifications. And that might be a technical error in the order, but she's also made the same statement in the statement of issue. And it's internally inconsistent with the legal standard, which she identifies in Section, Paragraph 19, which says, "Or solicitation specifications." She does not include that language. She has not considered the solicitation specifications, and you cannot add that to this order. Lastly, Mr. Huddleston brings up the point of negotiation. Like, we can't know what the price is until the parties get into a room. We agree. There is a way for you to award this contract to Ombudsman. And we may not have a remedy, because if you accept their proposal price as it was proposed, we don't have an additional protest. If you have a give-and-take negotiations with Ombudsman, where they give up some services that they'd offered to provide, and in exchange will lower their price, then we can't protest that either. But if Ombudsman attempts to unilaterally lower its price and not give up any services, then we will protest again, because that makes a mockery of the entire solicitation process. Because that allows a bidder to come in and promise the world to the school district, so that on the qualifications, they're ranked very highly. And since the district doesn't even look at price, it doesn't matter. And then you can come in and negotiate it later. So that completely disregards those that follow the process that you've outlined in the RFP, and allows favoritism in the process. And that is contrary to competition, which is prohibited by 120.57-3F. This recommended order does not do what you asked of the ALJ when this matter was referred to the ALJ. Once again, I offered an explanation to Woody about the ex parte communication. I apologize for what occurred. He can explain that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Figs. At this particular time, board members, you've heard both sides of the argument, and the superintendent counsel presented, and also Catapult counsel presented. I'm going to ask General Counsel Willie Rodriguez, I believe you did give us the bid protests and options that maybe the board may need to address. Is there any way that you could go over that with us briefly?
Yes, absolutely. Ms. Gordon, that was my intention, so thank you. So what we did was, what I did is I prepared for you essentially the three options that you'll have before you. Option 1 is a determination that the recommended order by the administrative hearing officer is legally sufficient to address the issues raised in the bid protest, and to reject the exceptions that were raised by Catapult. And then below that, you have the language as to what that would look like in regards to a motion, so that it's properly stated on the record. The second option you have as a board this evening is that you can make a determination that based on the exceptions issues raised by Catapult, the recommended order by the administrative hearing officer should be rejected in part, and that a final order be prepared accordingly. Under that second option, you would direct me with what portions of the record you find, or what portions of the order you find need to be modified or changed, based on the comments you heard from counsel. And then the third option is a determination that based on the exceptions raised by Catapult, the recommended order by the administrative hearing officer should be rejected in whole or in part, and then remanded for further review by the administrative hearing officer. With options 2 and 3, I will caution or remind you that they do require us to get a little bit more into the details about what portions you choose to change in the recommended order, or what portions you ask the administrative hearing officer to review, but we can discuss those openly in this meeting. Otherwise, with option 1, it would be the basis for approving the recommended order as submitted by the hearing officer.
Thank you so very much, General Counsel. Ms. Moore, is that your name on the speakers list? Did you have a speech for it?
It's up from earlier.
Oh, it's in earlier. Right.
I think it's probably old, but I just wondered if we could have a couple-minute break and then come back, because this is challenging.
Well, what I was going to do is, as since the time is well-spent, and I think both sides have given, the superintendent counsel has given the presentation, and also Catapult counsel has given one, is there a question that you would like to ask of our general counsel in reference to this?
Well, I understand the process here, and it's pretty specific and makes it easy, but I think there were some compelling arguments made, and, you know, I think we've all, those of us who had to be involved in the bid process when we were selecting the firm to do the superintendent search, I found it, you know, at that point, very challenging for me. I remember going through that process. So maybe you could explain to me, outside of this particular process, it does, you know, there are some questions that I potentially have, and I don't want to ask them in case I'm, you know, stepping in an area that I shouldn't at this point. Is there, if we go through this, it really doesn't have anything to do with our process, or is there a chance to look at this whole situation again? Explain to me, you know, if there's that opportunity? Because I heard some compelling arguments, particularly with the price. I know it's not part of it, but it certainly does concern me. And I heard the argument that if you, one person goes out and puts the whole panorama of services and the other one doesn't, I, you know, having gone through it myself, I find that a little bit compelling.
So, Madam Chair, can I take a stab at trying to answer that?
Yes.
I think one of the things to remember, too, is that there are, there are RFPs or bids that are submitted by procurement, led by David Oakley, when he was in the back. And what they do is they're essentially buying widgets. They're buying pencils, they're buying smart boards, whatever, whatever you want to call it. And in those cases, price becomes the central point, or one of the central factors. The percentage that's assigned to pricing may be different. It may be not only a requirement, but an essential material requirement of that bid. In this particular case, I think what you heard from superintendent's counsel was that pricing was a consideration for the first component, when they were trying to shortlist from 6 to 3, which is why it was part of it. But the rationale from procurement, as evidenced in the documents you have before you, was that there were too many, it was difficult to make an apples-to-apples comparison based on the six proposals they received. So procurement makes a determination at the outset and says, "We're going to give everyone a zero. No one gets an advantage or a disadvantage." Obviously, the argument from Catapult is, "Hey, we should have received favorable consideration." Obviously, the argument from Catapult is, "Hey, we should have received favorable consideration." Even if they get favorable consideration in round one, however, at the end of the day, you still come out with three individual firms that move on to round two. And in round two, you start the scoring all over again. Based on the procurement documents that were openly submitted and sent out to the world to bid on this, in round two, there was no pricing consideration. And round two was simply an evaluation of the presentations made to the committee. And at that point, then, is when the committee members would have to make a determination as to which one they want to select based on qualifications. Procurement, their interpretation would go through the process, and then after they've selected, the top bidder would go to the first vendor and say, "Here's the services we need." If they can't negotiate a favorable deal, they go to the second one. If they can't negotiate with the second one, they go to the third. And if that's not possible, then they've got to scrap the process in its entirety and start all over again. So in this particular situation, it may be different than what you've heard before with other procurement processes that you get submitted before you. And I'm obviously paraphrasing a lot of the evidence and information that's been submitted here, but it's all part of the record, and it's, I think it's, that portion of it, I think, is fairly clear.
Go ahead, Ms. Moore.
Okay, so that helps. What about the point that they had already been a provider, and what we heard from the owner, that they had substantial investments in buildings here? Does that factor into procurement, or is that considered at any point in the process?
I wasn't part of the procurement process. I would think that if a vendor is an existing vendor, they're going to have some inherent advantages. One of those is they're going to understand and know what that process is from the get-go, because they'll understand their needs a little bit better. In terms of investments that they've made, I don't know if that was any of the three scoring criteria in round two. If it was, it certainly benefited the incumbent. If it wasn't an inherent criteria, that would have meant that the procurement staff and really the service, the client in these procurement matters is the group that says, "We need these alternative educational services." So if that client says, "We need to take into account existing investment," they would have taken that into account, and Catapult would have received preferable scoring. If they didn't think that was important, the investment was just a goodwill gesture by Catapult, but it may not have amounted to any scoring. I can't answer that question directly, but that's as best as I can do, because I was not part of that procurement process.
Well, then, just my final comment, Mrs. Gordon, certainly this is such an important issue to us, these services. I mean, this really is the juncture that we're in in providing services for kids who need remediation and with the high-stakes testing. It's critical, I understand it. So I'm assuming if Dr. Jenkins' staff went out for bid, then we're trying to find the very best vendor possible because of the needs of our kids. And I know it's getting greater and greater with the high-stakes nature of testing growing. So is that a true statement? I see you nodding. Maybe you could respond to, can she respond to that without impacting this? Then I can proceed.
Well, I mean, yeah, you can actually respond, because you can direct questions to any one of the, either Ombudsman, Catapult, or however you deem appropriate, so.
That is correct, Ms. Moore. We look for the best possible services for our students. There is no indication that individuals who provided services for us in the past should automatically be those who provide services for us in the future. We're looking for the best possible services for our students.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Gordon.
Well, I thank you, Mrs. Moore, because I think we both, you know, after hearing both sides. So basically, board members, at this particular time, we would like, Darryl, you want to, okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a question. If we are to accept the superintendent's attorney's comments that we are only supposed to consider the evidence that's presented and what the, you know, what the ALJ gave us, the recommendations, is there, what is the procedure, should we find, or I ask, to find favor with the request to, for Catapult to continue working in the offices that they put together? You know, I mean, I mean, what is the procedure for that to be considered?
Okay, so your determination here today is really, I know it's difficult, because it's so technically legal in terms of what you're being asked to do, and you're being charged with that under the procedures in Chapter 120 of Florida statutes. But your determination is, do you need to change what that administrative hearing officer's conclusions were or not? Did you hear anything compelling to change it or not? If you didn't, all that happens is you're denying the bid protest. And while this process has seemed to have dragged out for a few months, the reality is, is once you enter that final order, once you approve the final order to be entered, and then it is incumbent upon the superintendent to essentially go back to where they left off. It's as if everything is frozen. We've not, the school board, the superintendent, has not been able to negotiate with Ombudsman during this period of time. They've not been able to negotiate with Catapult or anyone else. So after today, you know, if your finding is that you're going to uphold the recommended order, then that's the finding, and essentially, the superintendent would then go back to Ombudsman first. There have been settlement proposals. Superintendent can take those into account. So her staff is not going to be oblivious to those. She will have those. Those will be part of whatever future decisions they have to make in the few weeks and months to come to provide those kinds of services.
Did that help, Mrs. Flynn?
Well, Madam Chair, it did to a point. I think what I'm asking is, if we were to accept the magistrate's, am I using the correct word?
Hearing officer.
If we were to accept the recommendations, is there still opportunity for Catapult's compromise recommendation to be considered?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well, with that in mind, Ms. Cadel, did you want to, did you have a comment?
Yes, I do. Based on the conversation that just happened, and the fact that we are at a stalemate at this, and school's getting ready to start, and we have children who are going to need services, I move that based on a complete review of the record, the School Board of Orange County reject Catapult's stated exceptions to the administrative law judge's findings of facts and conclusions of law in the recommended order, and that the general counsel prepare a final order consistent with the recommended order issued by the administrative law judge, and such final order be signed and executed by the school board chair or the presiding vice chair in his absence within seven days of the date of today's school board meeting.
There's a motion on the floor that's been moved by Ms. Cadel, that, based on the completed review, and seconded by Ms. Robinson. All of those in favor of adopting that recommendation coming from Ms. Cadel, which would be option one?
I want to ask for discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Are there any more discussions at this time, since the motion is on the floor? Okay, hearing none? We'll go ahead. All those in favor of adopting the recommendation coming from Ms. Cadel signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposes, nay? Then it's been passed 7-0. So, Madam Superintendent, that brings us to your report. And we would like to thank general counsel. Thank you all so very much. And I think you heard the board member, I think that there are some concerns up at the board table, that based on what we voted on tonight, that we did approve, we did approve, and we used option one in the selection on approving. The majority of the board did. So thank you so very much to all of the councils and to those that came in to speak tonight. Yes.
Mrs. Gordon, I would ask the superintendent
Yes.
And her staff to consider, at least to look at, the compromise that was offered by Catapult?
Okay. Okay. Did you all understand that? I think for general counsel purposes on both sides, Mr. Rodriguez, will you just summarize what Ms. Flynn just asked before general counsel leave the building?
I want to give a better response to Ms. Flynn, actually. We are aware of what was offered. We will be talking with individual board members.
Okay, did you understand that, Mr. Figs? Okay, thank you so very much. Thank you both for coming, and we appreciate you so much. Thank you. And to the other councils, thank you so very much for being there. I think that's Mr. Huddleston. And Mr. Stewart, you're the all, we thank you too for coming and speaking before this board. We appreciate you. Dr. Mestal, thank you and your team. And that ends your part, so if you want to be dismissed at this time, you may, unless you want to hear the superintendent's report. All right, thank you. I think the superintendent's is first, and then the general counsel. Thank you so very much. Let me find.
The agenda, although we sometimes do it in reverse order, the agenda has, under the superintendent's report, all of your information items. So let me just tell you three quick things as information items as well, and then, Madam Chair.
That's it. It's your time.
So, three quick things, because I know it's late. Number one, we are very proud, very pleased to announce that our PR office just received two national awards of excellence from Inspr. That's the National Association of School Public Relations executives. One was the 2013 Annual Report we produced, and the other was for School Choices Magnet Program Guide. We got two national awards of excellence, not state, but national. I said, I said three quick things. First was, first was Inspr.
This is your time.
Secondly, I'm sure you saw the news release. We are extremely proud that our chief facilities officer, John Morris, was named a top governmental executive by Orlando Business Journal. There's a picture. I was waiting on them to queue me with the photo. If you, if you had an opportunity to look at the news release, it is quite impressive. We are extremely proud, extremely pleased that he's a part of our team and committed to the young people of this community in our facilities program. And so I won't go into the details, but the news release was lovely, the event was lovely. They actually taped both of us. John gave some comments about his work ethic and what he learned even from, a young man from his father, and that he carries with him still. And I have to say, we certainly commended his work ethic and also his integrity. It's brought great credibility to our building programs, highly regarded, highly respected in this community, so I wanted to acknowledge that in the meeting. And then lastly, one of our area superintendents, this is, and I'm sure we made it extra-long just for him, Mr. John Rudzik's last school board meeting, he will be sorely missed. Congratulations on his retirement, and thank you for your service.
Well, and we know we'll see you in about six weeks, and you'll look relaxed and refreshed and all of those wonderful things that our retirees look at, look like once they leave us. So we're going to miss you.
Superintendent, are you through with all the good news? Okay, at this particular time, and I'm going to ask board members, because we just have to, you know, you know we're going to say something about John. But at this particular time, my general counsel, and I do want to thank the general counsel for preparing our board. It's a difficult thing, as Ms. Moore and Ms. Flynn stated, when you get into something like what we just went through. But I really want to thank you for your expertise in getting us the correct staff that we needed, the superintendent counsel, also for her, so that we can make sure that all i's were dotted and the t's were crossed, and you did an exceptional job on that. And I do want to commend you for that on behalf of the board in preparation and preparing us for that protest, okay? So at this particular time, report by school district general counsel.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. We have one more legal announcement, and that is that the School Board of Orange County, Florida, and don't shoot me, will meet in another executive session
Yeah, we are, you know.
To discuss settlement in the matter of School Board of Orange County versus Orange County, Florida on August 21st, 2014.
Oh, right. 21st. Oh, 21st.
21st, at 4:00 PM on the ninth floor of this building. The meeting will be transcribed by a court reporter, and the transcript will be made available for public review at the conclusion of the litigation. The following persons may be in attendance, all school board members, Superintendent Dr. Barbara Jenkins, myself as general counsel, Ms. Eileen Fernandez as associate general counsel, and Marcus Marchena and Keith Graham as outside counsel, along with a court reporter. I do also have to thank you today, also on the personnel agenda. The superintendent has been asking for some time for some additional support in facilities for Mr. Morris. Mr. Morris has used his resources to create a nice, comfortable office for an attorney out there. We had interviewed a series of candidates. I didn't know that we would have someone by today, quite frankly, but we did have a board-certified land use attorney, real estate attorney, who has accepted the position. She comes from the University of Florida with honors, so I will be keeping a close eye on her performance. But, and, and, as the superintendent has pointed out, one of the things that we're trying to do is to cut back on our outside reliance on particularly our real estate matters. So there are a number of facility use agreements, smaller transactional issues, that we hope that between her and Ms. Fernandez, we can hope to knock out and be able to mitigate our outside real estate costs while we enjoy the relationship we have with our outside firms. It'd be better if we can save some of those dollars. So the superintendent really insisted on making sure that we had that attorney in place, and so with that, her wish has been granted this evening with your personnel.
You're like I twisted your arm.
Didn't twist my arm, but it was, it was certainly something that I think would be beneficial for the board, and particularly if, on August 26th, you get the sales tax, it's, it'll be beneficial to have another set of eyes and ears at facilities to facilitate and help John to make sure everything's in order. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
What time is that executive session? Four.
Okay. All right. At this particular time, I'm going to just skip and come back for the report, but I need to hear from Darryl Flynn, board member Flynn, board member Roach, and board member Robinson. Is this in the comments? Or, because I wanted to cover your report. I wanted to get Ms. Cadel's budget report, Ms. Moore's communication report, and the legislative. Okay? And then I'll come back to the speakers.
I did that pre-agenda.
Okay, so we can pass that off? Okay, very good. Okay. My report for 1901, I would like Ms. Robinson to pass this to the superintendent, where I had an opportunity to attend as a representative of your community action board with Mayor Theresa Jacobs, the Florida Neighborhood Conference. The only thing that was missing was the schools. They went everywhere, they did the gardens. We went to all of the gardens, but they forgot. So I know Mr. Morrison, we've been working on putting gardens in our school, but we were able to go in the Joey's area with the new garden. They are willing to come into partnership, so I'm asking Dr. Jenkins, she's already aware of it, that the neighborhood, they are going to be, I think, in Lake County next year, and we've asked them in their board meeting, I suggested that they tour the schools in the community. They did everything but talk about the schools, but then the children were there. So Dr. Jenkins is already working with Mayor Theresa Jacobs to make sure if that conference ever come back, we're included, like if we have gardens, and then we are in partnership. Mr. Morris is already working on that for the beautification, Ms. Cadel, of our schools, where the gardens, they have ways to put plants up that doesn't need watering, because they're Florida-related, and you know, they did a tour for us. But everything is in that report. The other report in the package that I had, we did go to the southern region, Mr. Roach and I, and I didn't know if you had a comment, but we were in Savannah, Georgia, and had a great time. There will no longer be a southern region with the National School Board Association. We will all be meeting as one big group. And the next meeting, I've already given it to you, will be in Nashville. That will be the annual conference, instead of going to California. They're going to do a couple of southern states, and Ms. Cadel had served on that board, also as former president of the Florida School Board Association. So that report is in there. I want to thank Joseph. You will be getting this report, but Dr. Jenkins' staff is already working on it. We had an opportunity... on it. We had an opportunity to work with the special civic education curriculum, hands-on dealing with the federal courts, and we selected the part on bankruptcy. We're trying to get it into Boone High School, into Jones, and Oak Ridge. It was mandated that the students need to learn civic, and I know I had to give the end of the course exam at my school for civic. I guarantee you, when they go through this presentation, I'm going to have Joseph to send it to you. It's an interactive, about why the judges have a court. You know, you read through the book, and we'll send this to you. The light lights up, so you'll know where the judge sits, the plaintiff, the lawyers. I just think that is, the defendant, I just think it's so wonderful. And Judge McEwen of the federal court is working with Dr. Jarom, and Dr. Jenkins, and myself, trying to get that throughout the United States in every school that we can. You have one other piece on your desk, and we're getting ready to celebrate 145 years of Orange County Public School, and please call Vanessa Neblet. She needs information on your district. They are going to put it, you want to give the history of District 1, the history of District 2, the history of District 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. And they will come to you, or we can go to them, and it's called Orlando Memory. And they will actually videotape you. If you want to take them into your district, you were talking about all the things that happened, Mr. Roach, please call her. This is a part of our 142nd celebration, but Vanessa Burnett has taken on that project, and we've already started. I'm doing, I think, the School Board members and Rick, you know, I've asked you to help me with that. Joey has taken on something, so each person. We're doing the librarians, the counselors, and the School Board members, and then everybody else is doing something else. Please call her and get your district on the Orlando memory, the way it used to be and what it looked like now. All right? And how large you have grown. So with that in mind, are there any statements of policy-level issues that the board would like to agenda for subsequent meetings or work session? And what he already told us, we have one work session coming up. Okay, hearing none. We will hear from Mr. Rick Roach at this particular time, followed by Ms. Robinson.
You pushed your button.
You pushed your button, so we'll take it off.
I feel like I'm on a panel discussion. What was the question?
You were going to talk about John. I think you were going to talk about John.
What was the question?
You were going to talk about John.
Oh, yeah. I know. I've been thinking, I've been trying to sit here thinking of the right words, because we're losing a fabulous educator. I think that's the main thing I want to say, and not to mention a very good friend, but a great educator, I think John is. And I'm going to just brag about him a little bit. And I think I mentioned to you one night, and I've known John longer than being a board member, and I don't know exactly how that worked, but it was years ago. He, he impressed me so much with his, his taking the kids to UCF and going through a mock graduation with them. I think I might have mentioned that, that was fabulous. But John, you know, you are the, I've worked with you this time as area super, and of course with James Lawson, and when I couldn't get a hold of James, I got John. And John was the first area superintendent that ever said these words to me when I called with an issue. He said, "Rick, what would you like to see happen?" Nobody ever asked me that. And so it took me off guard. I'm thinking, golly, you mean I don't have to fight for it? You want me to tell you what I want? That was really classic, I thought. And it set the tone for who, that's who John really is. Not that I always get what I want, but I think when he starts the conversation that way, John, John lets you know, Rick, what's important, and let's get it resolved. And I guess what I could say about John without taking 20 minutes, which I easily could, is that he has a wonderful ability to make peace, make peace. And even in the most difficult situations, John somehow is able to find sunshine and solution. That's, that's the best thing I can say about you, John. So, you're a great friend, and I can't wait to, I'll have you over the house as soon as it's not so hot. And I, I told you I'd cook you some burgers and, and have you some iced tea, too, over in the backyard. So I'll be with you when it cools off, because you'll really enjoy my backyard, and I owe you, owe it to you. But thank you for all the years, and I don't know how we even begin to thank you really fully for it.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Roach. Ms. Robinson?
I too agree with so much Mr. Roach said, and I've known you longer than when I was a board member, too. We, we met, I believe it's been 10 years ago now, when we served on the OCPS Foundation Count Me In Steering Committee. And you were a principal then, was it Northlake Park, is that what it's called, elementary? And I, I agree, too. I knew then you were a fine educator, and it was just, it's been wonderful working with you. And Rick made such a good point. You're so gentle, and you're so kind, and, and that really shows. And I know you've touched many, many lives, not just your students, but your faculty and all your coworkers here. And I'm going to miss you. So come back and see us, hopefully sooner rather than later. And Rick, if you're having him over for burgers, you better have us all over. He makes pretty good burgers. So, anyway, best wishes. Congratulations, and enjoy your time off.
Okay, and then I'll just close out, since I'm your other person, your other board member. I want you to know John has already volunteered to help us with Jones. I can't believe he's done that. But I just think that is awesome. Your work ethic is unbelievable. I've never seen anybody like you. And you know, oh, Lord, you know how tough it is. I think, I have to say with Kathy Schuler and Dr. James Lawson in the back, you, you've been under some of the tops, and you have weathered the storm. I didn't know if you would be able to get through one of them, but you were there. And I told him, I said, hey, look, we're going in this meeting, we're going together. And we went in that meeting, we went in together, and believe it or not, we came out together. And I looked at him one day, I said, John, you were under, you were under Dr. Lawson. What happened? You know, you've got to get tougher than this. And believe it or not, he got tough, and it's just incredible. You've always been with us. You've always had my district. You've always had it at heart, and I've never seen anybody work as hard as you. And then to not leave the superintendent and leave my, the schools in District 5 without any administrators, you are working doubly hard to see. It's just been a joy working with you. I thought I was running you off, and I thought that's why you were leaving. So I, you know, I always say mail always give me up, and then they give me Joseph, and then they give me Deborah, everybody. I'm always getting somebody. So, they, they work so hard, but I'm glad, I, I hope I'm not the reason you're leaving. But you have weathered the storm, and if you did what you did in my community, you could make it anywhere. And I just wish you the best, and I love you. God bless. And you are invited for celebration. I already told you that. Okay, thank you. Okay, yeah. So at this particular time, Madam Superintendent, are there any comments? Rick, Rick, you have one more?
When we're through, I just have one thing to say.
Go ahead.
I have to say this, because you always have to reinforce good behavior so that it'll continue, but probably every two or three months. But I just have to thank the superintendent and the staff. I want all of you to know that when I call you, or email you, or text you about issues with my community, I'm telling you, it's just a beautiful response, and I don't want to ever take that for granted. You guys get back with me like greased lightning. And when you do that, you must understand you're getting back with the community. That's usually who I'm voicing. You send things out to the community through me, you call them, and, and I just have to tell you, I really mean that. It really is a beautiful thing. I don't have much sitting on my desk, because nobody calls me back on issues, and I think that's good. So the other, the other one's more individual, and I just want to tell you, we've got, one of our staff members has, of course, won a huge award, and gets total compliments, and we all know the work that he does. But I have to tell you something that's really special about John Morris the other day. I had a constituent call me who was, who was really complaining about a promise we made years ago for the Gatlin Center, the old Navy lab over there on the lake. I always wished I had an office there looking over that lake. But it's always looked kind of scrungy out front, and we really never have cleaned it up. And I finally got some people closing in on me and said, what can we do? You know, think about this for a second. Of all the big problems John Morris and his crew has, building schools, he went out personally with his team and met the neighbors about some plants.
Our favorite.
And, and, and he goes and plants a bunch of crepe myrtles along Gatlin Avenue there. And these people, I should have said, I should have read the emails to you. They wrote him back, and then copied me, and just talked about how, how they were so impressed with the Orange County Public Schools for, for keeping up. So think about that. How many times have you, have you heard the, the comment, "I've got bigger fish to fry"? Anybody ever heard that in politics? "I got bigger fish to fry." What that means is, I don't have time for the little problems. And, and John is not like that. And so I wanted to tell him, I told him already personally, he's probably embarrassed back there, he doesn't take this stuff very well. So he knew it was coming, but I wanted to say it out loud, big and strong, how important that is in this community, because we got some happy people who are telling people all over the place what a great bunch of people we are.
Oh, wow. Well, thank you so much. You and Mr. Mars, you all are just doing great things, and this is a great way to end. But before we end, Ms. Cadel, can you take us out?
I am. I'm going to, I'm going to embarrass Mr. Morris also. As you know, we own 40, 42 acres or 45 acres out in Wedgefield, and we went ahead and fenced it because we just needed to fence it. And Friday night, like at 10 o'clock, I'm reading Facebook, and one of the neighbors has posted on Facebook that there is a deer and a fawn caught on, on the property, and what can we do about it? And so number one, I posted on Facebook, if you need to get a hold of me immediately, and put my OCPS email address, because I usually look at Facebook late at night. Mr. Morris had the project manager go out there, look and see what was going on. We couldn't find the fawn and the deer, but we did find the gate had been cut for the second time, the, the chain had been cut for the second time. And we did find some, some ATV track going in there. We looked for the deer, they looked for the deer prints, but they couldn't find them. But they could find that some ATVs had been on the property. And he came to me today, and he said, Joey, I think we have a solution for what we need to do out there to help address this problem. So, it doesn't matter when it is, if it's Friday night at 10 o'clock, and you shoot him an email and say, this is on Facebook, can you get someone to look into it? I mean, I had heard back, I think by the middle of the afternoon on Saturday, which I had driven out there to see what was going on. So I had also seen that the gate was open, because my girlfriend was in the car, and she said, Joey, that gate's open. And I was like, ooh, all of the rest of them were locked, but that one gate was open. So, thank you for always figuring out how to stay one step ahead of what we need to do to really protect our communities, to protect the property, and to protect the, the homeowners that live around the property. So, kudos to you.
Well, I want to say to you all, you've just been wonderful. I want to thank the Board Service staff, with Ms. McGill and her staff, with Joseph and all, for helping us to go through the board meeting tonight. I really like to thank the executive cabinet. Dr. Jenkins, I don't know if you made them stay or asked them to stay, but I thank all the administrators in the back, that it's hanging around. We're going to let you go. This has been a long meeting, but it's a lot, and we're out much sooner than we thought. But I want to thank all of your team. They either love you, Dr. Jenkins, you either told them they had to stay here. And definitely the area superintendent's behind you, and Ms. Mars is always over there, and Dr. Polk down in the corner. And Rick Collins, I really want to thank you, because we went through that, that budget very nice, and I thank the board members for being on top. And Ms. Kathy stayed through the whole thing. What can I say? So, if that of all hearts is satisfied, I'd like to thank our, our technology team. You're the best. Meetings adjourned.